I call the meeting to a order. Please rise and join us in the place.
I congratulate you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to those in the audience here and those viewing us at home.
Item three, second reading, civil fingerprinting policy.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If we might, each of us probably have a little something to say, but just as a point of personal privilege, what happened this evening is really inspiring and good feeling for the community. And it's interesting how small the world gets when tragic events like this take place. And just from our own standpoint, I mean, I had a nephew that was on Laurel Street in Watertown, and they were pulling bullets out of the front door, you know, for evidence. We had our police officers there. I have a nephew, his wife and his daughter were all running the marathon that day. My son Kevin courses up and living up on Mission Hill and graduating from Northeastern called us that day. He was going to meet some buddies down at the finish line, but if not for the timing, could have been different for our family. The night that the second suspect was captured, my son contacted us live streaming celebrations out in the street, college students up on Mission Hill praising the local police department there, the Boston Police Department, their efforts. And it's because of events like this that years ago this board, not necessarily this makeup, but this particular board, invested in our police department, allowed them to come participants in NEMLEC. And it's events like these where it really comes back and pays huge dividends. We have been the beneficiary of NEMLEC here in North Reading, and I'm just so proud that we were able to offer our assistance through our membership in NEMLEC and the three gentlemen officers that participated. It is these three officers that happened to go, but we have a number of officers who are participants and are ready to answer the call. And I'm proud to be a member of the board, proud to be a member of this community, and happy that we're able to assist. And thank you for tonight's thing. You did a terrific job. Mr. Prisco did a great job in putting the video together, which I appreciate very much. And it's great to be a member of this community and Boston Strong.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Valiakonis on the fingerprint policy. There was some additional materials you provided, and then I believe earlier today, Town Council had made some recommendations in terms of the policy. I don't know if it's probably best for us to, I don't know, I know personally I haven't had time to digest everything that Town Council has sent to us. I don't know if it'd be best to table this until our next meeting. Board members, I don't know how everyone else feels concerning this particular issue. Mr. Prisco?
I think we should ask Chief Murphy what impact it has on anybody delaying it, if there is any at all.
Oh, Chief, all right. I didn't say, I'm sorry. Come on up.
I, like you, did not have a chance to review all the comments.
Where are the comments, by the way?
Town Council's, I don't know if all board members got it. I know I saw an email early this morning from Town Council. He had a number of comments to various parts of the policy that, all honesty, I didn't have a chance to read.
Correct.
So I think it may be best if we just table this item, come back at our next meeting.
Is there an impact, though? Is there an impact if we delay?
There was an issue with something else has to occur. We need to get approval, I believe, from the, what I briefly read, from the Attorney General's office on the policy.
That's been done already. And DCJIS, which is the, which is Corey information, where we could share within the community. So we do have to get that approved once the policy is completed.
I honestly think we'd be rushing it tonight. I don't have, I didn't have enough time to dedicate to it.
None of us have it either.
Okay. So I think it makes sense. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, no, I just, I don't know if the suggested changes are substantive enough to hold up the passing of the policy, because we can always go back and amend it. To me, we're in the busy season right now where we have a lot of outsiders coming into our community, knocking on doors, soliciting funds, and, you know, if we're going to delay it another week or two or three, and again, first, we need one more meet, or two more readings?
No, one more will do it. Second reading, second reading is adoption.
Okay. And, you know, and again, I don't know if the suggested changes from Town Council are substantive enough to warrant holding it up again. I want to give our police department enough tools to implement what we've been talking about over the last six months or so. So, yeah, we can always come back and amend it. If you say in a week or so it doesn't matter, let us know.
I wish this was implemented quite some time ago. So we're ready and prepared to implement as soon as you give us the word.
Mr. Prisco?
So Chief, if we actually read this in tonight, the second reading, and then adopted it as written, and then go along with Mr. Delam, O'Leary is suggesting that we do a modification at some point over the next several months, would that be an acceptable step for you?
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's acceptable to me. Because I think we're better off as a town with it as written than without it at all, right?
From what I understand, the policy is a model policy and throughout the Commonwealth. So I think we're on safe ground to at least begin the process. And like you said, if we have to edit it down the road, then we'll deal with it at that point.
No, I don't want to take it down the road. I'd like to be committed that we do it in the next, you know, two weeks.
I'm not saying I'm not committed to it. I just, I'm just a little hesitant. There was a number of comments from Council.
Yeah.
I didn't have a chance to go through it. I don't know why he's recommending those comments. I don't know whether they're important or not important. And I know that there's a list of other categories that we do want to include. I think we can address that this evening. I've had an opportunity to review that. That was in our packet that we received on Friday, but the wishes of the board. Who else?
Again, I'm ready to go, get it implemented, to give the police department some tools to do it, and if someone wants to challenge us later on, go ahead. And again, I think it's wise to take the advice of Council, both if we get a chance to review it and amend it as such, you know, at the next meeting or two meetings from now.
Can someone, Greg, can you comment on the extent of the changes? I didn't, again, I did not have an opportunity to review that.
There's quite a few. I just scrolled through.
There's more than a dozen comments. I'm just not so sure what substance they are or whether they're going to affect the entire policy.
Mr. Prisco, Mr. Foddy, I guess my question is, no one else received it besides you and Town Administrator?
Like I said, I was tied up today. I just saw an email. I thought we all got it. You didn't get it, Greg?
I did, but I didn't have an opportunity. We didn't.
I'd be more happy to vote for it all.
Who sent it?
I think it's a little problematic for us to be expected to vote on something we didn't get. But I'll defer to the chief. If he wants to move forward with it, I'll be happy to vote on it tonight.
Well, you haven't looked at the comments, so you may, you don't know what risks we're taking, so then I guess we're really forced to not go forward tonight.
Board members? I'll do what the majority of the board wishes to do.
I'm good and ready to make a vote later.
My opinion is the chief wants to get it registered. I'm in support of it. And if we have to modify it at our next meeting based on Town Council's comments.
You have a motion, Mr. Foddy?
Well, there's two motions here. Which one is the?
I would include that and then come to its own.
Do I make the motion that and then to include this? I make, this is the first motion, then I include this. Well, it's a circle that applies. We have to make that decision.
I would include, personally, in terms of the additional items, if we're talking about those, I include every single one of those. I don't know why we would leave somebody out that gets a license. Chief, do you have any, you saw that list?
I did not see this.
Well, I don't know about automatic amusement.
That list has to be included in our bylaw, not in the policy.
What's that, I'm sorry, Chief?
The list of licensees has to be included in the bylaw.
Okay, so that's going to be in the article that we have to amend?
Yes, we do have an article on the law, which can be amended.
What's that?
The Chairman, I move to adopt the second reading of the civil fingerprinting policy for town-issued licenses to include the following licenses in the policy. Automatic amusement device, auctioneer, class one, class two, class three, commedital, flammable storage, jukebox, livery, lodging house, food billiard tables, Sunday entertainment, taxi, transient vendor, hawkers and peddlers, commedital, all alcohol, commedital wines and malts, club, all alcohol, club, all alcohol fraternal, package store, all alcohol, package store wines and malts, seasonal malt beverages, one-day wine and malt beverage, carnival fare.
Second.
A motion is a second. The only thing this leaves out is my basement. Drinking in my basement. We can include it, Mr. Foddy?
Yes. Get up an amendment.
Address what, Valley Road?
Mr. Mousier?
I heard taxi and I didn't hear limo.
Livery. Livery is limo. Livery is included.
Okay, fine.
But, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Just in relation, some of these are duplicitous in relation to some of the license, amusement devices, you know, someone's got the little machines that you, they steal my money because I'm terrible at, I have no skill, trying to get the stuffed animal. Is it the intent to, if, you know, I use kitties as a, for instance, you know, they have a couple of those devices there. They're going to be covered under the all-alcohol beverage license, and are they going to be tagged again with another fee because they have an amusement device?
As far as I, as far as I know, I don't believe that, but if you attach it to the applicant's license, then yes, they would be required to. But you're going to get the same results, so it does not make sense to have them repeat the process.
Right, and I also do not necessarily want to have a local establishment pay $100 for this one and for this one and for this one and for this one, if it's a, if we're just checking the same person over and over and over again.
I think in the policy, we could also address that to include if they've been approved for a license, then.
For one, then they're covered for.
Correct.
I think if, as a modification, if you could include that, I think that would be more acceptable to me, because again, I'm not looking to fee our current local establishments to death. What I'm looking to do is, as you are, is to get concerned about, first of all, who's going to hold the license, and then who's coming into town as a transient vendor.
The intent is to find that the person's suitable to hold the license. That's what the intent of this policy is.
So you could log it somewhere in your.
I will.
... bag to, you know, not have the town double dip, basically, and double hit, you know, our local establishments who have multiple licenses within the same establishment. I think that would be more fair and reasonable. I don't know what everybody else's feeling is, but.
No, I don't disagree with that.
Okay, so when we go to modify things, if we can include that, that'd be great.
On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chief unanimous?
I guess if you're going to be implementing this now somewhat immediately, if we don't modify it from a practical standpoint and from a practice standpoint, we aren't necessarily going to hit.
Correct, but the only ones that I can enforce right now are the ones that are currently in the bylaw. Those other licenses, we would not be able to proceed forward until it's adopted in the bylaw, in the amended by, if it's approved.
Yeah. Looking at the email from Town Council, the very first thing he recommends is that Tom may wish to modify the effective date of the policy to reflect the date the policy is approved by DCJIS.
And Chief, we have not got that yet?
Until the board approves it, it's not something I can send to. So the draft policy that we have in place, it would be the day it gets issued is the day, the effective date. So I would send it to DCJIS, get approval from them, and once it gets returned with approval, we'll publish it.
Mr. Foddy, we have a motion.
Chairman, I move to adopt the second reading of the civil fingerprinting policy for town-issued licenses.
I'll second it, right?
Motion is a second. Any discussion? I'm going to vote no at this time, with the reason being that because I haven't had sufficient opportunity to review comments by Town Council, so I'll be voting no. I think it's going to pass and you can implement it. I think it should be in place. My concern is anything that's in this from Town Council should be reviewed before we embark down this road. But I think you and your department should have the ability to do a background check and this, so the public knows. This isn't just limited to Massachusetts. This allows, that's all the department's able to do at the present time, is do a state background check on anyone that comes in, especially those that knock on your door and try to sell you things. This, once this is implemented, will allow the department to do a nationwide background check, which is very important. I'm just concerned if we're going down this path without reviewing what Town Council says, so. On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Four to one, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Item four, budget informational hearing. We had a notice, Mr. Valiakonis, is that correct?
I do, but my secretary didn't put it in the packet. I was just looking for it myself. Apologize, it was advertised in the newspaper. I don't have a copy of the advertisement.
Was it in the packet? Was it sent to us?
It was, there was a reference to the fact that there was a notice that was put in the newspaper. I did not see a copy in the new packet.
Is there a requirement that needs, that it needs to be read before we start informational hearing?
No, there's no statute order department, then it'll just be read.
Mr. Statz, does that have to be read before we begin?
I'm not aware.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. I didn't want to go down a path that, thank you very much. Mr. Valiakonis, turn it over to you.
Yeah, would you allow me to proceed?
Please.
Good evening, everyone. Start with the budget informational hearing this evening. This is a requirement of the Board of Selectmen before the Board adopts and considers the budget to have an informational session, which is intended for the public to command and offer comments about the budget, and that's why we've gone ahead and advertised it. By way of background, we've invited in all of the municipal departments who are here this evening, along with representatives of the Finance Committee, different boards and committees that are associated with different departments, are also present, together with the public that are being present here this evening. I've put together a short presentation that I'd like to go through, and I'll go through it and offer up some of the key elements associated with the budget, and then there'll be an opportunity for the Board and/or the public to ask any questions, and we'll respond to those questions. Please keep in mind that the intent of tonight's meeting is informational. The votes of the Board in terms of their budget recommendations will be coming out at their meeting next week. So at next Monday's meeting, the Board will be recommending their fiscal year 2014 budget.
Wonderful. So the budget goals, budget goals are conservative by nature, and we've put them up on the screen here. We, one of the hallmarks of this budget is conservative revenue estimates, and I think for those of you who are participant, when Mr. Hinkston came in and presented the fiscal year 2012 audit report, indicated that one of the things that made North Reading unique, and one of the things he wished us to continue, was a era of fiscal conservatism, and that has really worked out well for the town. So the budget estimates that are used here this evening, the revenue estimates that are used here this evening tend to be on the conservative side. One of the other elements that Mr. Hinkston referred to and we've incorporated into our budget goals is maintaining our critical reserves. Critical reserves would be things like the stabilization fund, different special purpose stabilization funds that we have available. Those are your main reserves. The town has not typically spent down and used its reserve funds for the purpose of funding the budget. As the economy is in difficult shape, it's even more critical that we maintain our reserves. One of the values of that is the town has a double-A bond rating, and one of the things that was cited when the town went through its bond rating review a year ago is that Moody's appreciates and wants to look at reserves as being a critical element in determining what the town's bond rating will be. So we need to be diligent in terms of maintaining our reserves and not using them necessarily to offset our ongoing costs in terms of maintaining the town's bond rating. The value in that is the town receives a lower interest rate. The lower interest rate relates to the amount of money that residents pay in their tax bills, so it's really important that we try to maintain that. One of the things that the Board had identified as a key budget goal several years ago was establishing long-term savings through labor contract negotiations. One of the items that comes up, for example, this year, and we'll talk a little bit about it later in the budget discussion, is the one-time longevity benefit. The next goal is maintaining an affordable health insurance plan. The health insurance plan this year, the health insurance budget is the largest single budget, except for the school budget, and it seems like this is the time of year where we give it the most attention. I'm happy to report that this year's health insurance budget sees a 3% increase. Last year it was 5%, and the year prior to that, it was a 1% decrease. So prior to that era, we were seeing increases in the health insurance range, in the range of 11 to 16% a year. And when you consider a 15 or 16% hit on a budget that's almost $5 million, it basically will gobble up all the available revenues that the town has to spend on its budget. So in terms of a budget and having a spending plan that fully funds department needs on both the town and the school side, it's critical that we maintain our health insurance increases to a manageable level. The reason again is so that we have money to be able to fund other services and programs that have been identified as being key.
I think it's important to acknowledge at this particular juncture that this was only able to be effectuated with the help of our employees.
Yes.
Labor unions working with us to stabilize this particular portion of the budget. So I shouldn't go unmentioned. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I have another slide on health insurance that I'll talk a little bit about later on. One of the things that the Board has asked is to look at developing alternative revenue sources. It's something that we try to do. We're constrained a little bit in terms of what we can spend monies on, but we do have things out there that we consider to be unique. We receive lease revenue for advertising space in town. There's a billboard that we receive about $12,000 in revenue on. And one of the things that we're looking into going forward is a solar facility, a solar generation facility that potentially could generate revenue for the town. So the Board is constantly looking at things that they want us to look at alternative revenue sources, again, not to depend so much upon traditional sources that are available to us. One of the new goals that came up in our budget discussions this year was the Board established a capital improvement planning committee. And the capital improvement planning committee came forward a few weeks ago, and they made a number of recommendations to the Board, and one of those recommendations was that we begin dedicating funding from our budget to fund capital. So it's always a difficult and a challenge to ramp it up, and the first year is the most challenging, and this budget does have some money that's in it that's set aside for capital. It's a little bit different in terms of how we funded things before. We always funded things in free cash at October town meeting. So this year what we're doing is we're funding a number of capital items at June town meeting, and there are some budget monies that are dedicated to be able to do that. And then the last budget goal, and certainly one of the things that brings us here this evening, is to continue the budget collaboration that exists between town and school leaders. We meet at least monthly throughout the year. We sit down and we discuss budgets. We will develop our first budget pass probably in August. So this budgeting has become a 12-month passion, for lack of a better word, that we have, but it has to become a 12-month exercise. Today is really the first date that we're publicly introducing the fiscal year 2014 budget. Town meeting will be taking place in June. And then finally, the final step is setting the tax rate. And I know those who are here this evening really understand this process, but for those who may be listening at home, the setting of the tax rate is the last step in the process. This is really the first step in the process, and town meeting is the next step in the process. So the setting of the tax rate follows the actions that take place this evening and follows the actions that take place at town meeting, not the other way around. Setting of the tax rate is really an exercise in math. Any question on the budget goals? We've applied the revenues as we have in the past between the town's fixed costs, which utilize about 31% of the available revenues, and then the additional monies are divided between the town and the schools. And so you can see the amounts that are shown here are the amounts that we apply to the town and the school budget. They are the three slices of the pie that we look at, and if you look at where the growth is, the growth is a little bit on the green side and a little bit on the red side. The blue area, which is fixed costs, or actually a fixed cost, have gone down, and that's really attributed to the fact that we've worked hard to limit what we consider to be the fixed items, the fixed costs in our budget. Revenues are divided, new revenues are divided between the town and the school on a 67-33 basis. So this just illustrates that divide and gives you the dollar amounts that are associated with that divide. The 67-33 split became institutionalized a number of years ago. It's something that we've established. Sometimes we make exceptions to it. We'll be talking a little bit about what some of those exceptions are further on in the presentation. So this is a summary of the fiscal 2014 revenue plan. What it shows is the categories or the sources of revenue on the left-hand side, and those start off with the town's tax levy. That's the 2.5% increase that people think of and hear of. New growth, which is the cost, the revenue generated from new construction when it comes onto the tax rolls. Debt exclusions, the debt exclusion number is any excluded debt that the town has, and you can see that that number is substantial in the range of $5.3 million for next year. Please keep in mind of that number, $3,337,000 of that is attributable to the debt service with the new high school, middle school project. So you'll see that that number ramped up in 2013, this fiscal year, and we're retiring some of our prior debt, so that's why the number's gone down a little bit. The number on the school debt will remain stable over the 25-year life of the debt service. We show amounts here for state aid, both unrestricted and Chapter 70. The numbers that are shown here are reflective of the House Ways and Means budget. So when we put the budget together in January, our initial budget estimates are based upon the House One or the Governor's budget. Those numbers get released somewhere around the third week in January when the Governor speaks to the Mass Municipal Association. The Finance Department then incorporates those numbers into our revenue projections, and they stay unchanged until the House Ways and Means budget comes out around mid-April. And these numbers reflect the House Ways and Means numbers that have come up. We feel, the administration feels that there's a great degree of certainty in these numbers. There may be some slight changes, but the main components, which are Chapter 70 and unrestricted aid, Chapter 70 is school aid. Unrestricted aid is what people used to call lottery aid and additional assistance. So if you look at Mr. Jones in the back of the room, he'll remember those as lottery aid and additional assistance. And at some point, those words came out of favor, and they now call it unrestricted government aid. There's also additional money on older school projects that were reimbursed under the former school aid, school construction assistance that we receive reimbursement from the Commonwealth on an ongoing basis for debt that we have, and this is applied toward that debt, so this isn't found money. And then the other items that we have in our revenue plan are local items. They are local receipts, and you can see that our local receipt number is down a little bit, and that's reflective of slowdown in economic conditions. The major component of this is motor vehicle excise tax. People buy new vehicles, they pay motor vehicle excise tax, there are fees, permits, and other revenue items that comprise this category. There are quite numerous. Liz and I spend a lot of time going through those items with the members of the financial planning team. And then other funding sources, which include a number of other things, but the main component of that is the debt capital stabilization fund and any other stabilization fund or reserve revenues that we may have. So if you look at that, we're not projecting a significant amount in revenue change for the upcoming year, and the budget proposal that will be presented this evening is reflective of the fact that there's not a significant change in the budget, because frankly, the revenues aren't there to merit a significant change in the budget. The bottom shows you how those monies are distributed between fixed costs, general government and schools, and we've talked a little bit about that prior in terms of how those numbers have come about. Any questions on this particular slide? Any questions on this particular slide?
Just the bottom line, Greg, as far as fiscal year 13 and 14 on the revenue, are we, we're about even? We haven't got a total.
We're up about 1.4%.
Up 1.4%, okay.
So we have a one, the budget is reflective of a 1.4% budget increase. Since we balance to the dollar, and that's what this budget is intended to do, we've got about a 1.4% increase projected.
Mr. Frisco.
Where do the ALS revenues get captured?
They would actually come in under the other financing sources. So if you look at the bottom one under the revenues where it says other financial sources, that's where it would come in.
Did we ever get a revenue, I thought we were going to get a revenue plan for ALS. At least I have a note that we were going to get that between the time we had our budget hearings on that Saturday till now. I haven't seen anything on it, so I'm not sure if maybe the financial planning team has it, or I would like to see it.
I know the finance chief's here. Between him and the finance director, if something has been put to go.
As of last week, for fiscal year 13, we have total receipts 501,511. We haven't collected that, but that's what we build from July to up through April.
July through April?
Right.
And again, chief, what was that number? Thank you, sir.
Out of this money, we've also paid out $20,261.47 to ConStar because of the amount that we're billing. And please keep in mind, there's always like a four-month delay in us getting the money that's owed to us. So right now, we have a total credit balance of $481,250.25.
That number he just, I'm sorry.
You going to follow?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, based on the way the program is going, if you've taken a look at fiscal 2014, it made some kind of a projection.
If you remember the budget meeting, we had that language from ConStar, Mr. Martin, and he says, "We're on track to making $600,000 next year if things stay as they are today." So that's the best that I can give you. He's our professional, and that's what they say we're going to make. So that's where, that's where we are.
If I could maybe fill in a little bit of a blank here. The amount of revenue that's shown for ambulance revenues is 307,000. So we've utilized $307,000 in other financing sources toward the fiscal year 2014 budget. If we go ahead and we add additional staffing in the department, we estimate that the all-inclusive cost of three personnel will be in the range of $205,000 in the first year.
Okay, so to make sure I understand it, so that $600,000 number, the number you're applying towards this financial number is around 300,000?
307.
307.
Which is available on hand right now.
Which is the other issue was.
Right. Thank you.
Let's summarize our cash reserve position because this is a good opportunity to give the public an opportunity to know what we do have in our reserves and what we intend to do with regard to the budget. So those items that you see with asterisks next to them, we're using some of those amounts toward the fiscal year 2014 budget, some but not all. That would be our free cash, where we're planning on utilizing approximately 214, 214?
214.743.
214.743 toward the budget. Two particular items that we are intending to use, those are two one-time expenses that will be retired at the end of fiscal year 2014. Our stabilization fund, where is 1,915,845. We do not anticipate that there'll be any drawdown on that going toward the budget. As a matter of fact, we would like to be able to add to that stabilization fund, and I think I've said that I would like to see that number be $2 million because I think it looks a lot better than 1,915. So a capital stabilization fund, this is known as the capital or the debt stabilization fund. It was created back in 2007. It utilized monies that were originally brought in through the Berry Center development, and we have been adding to this fund regularly at the June and October town meetings. The present balance is 565,592. The budget contemplates using $550,000 of that toward revenue, or toward expenses.
Future reference, I think it'd be helpful, at least it'll be helpful to me when you show this, if you then show another column that shows how much out of each account you intend to use next year's budget.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that change is done for town meeting.
Yeah, if we had this presentation, we could at least make our notes, but if this is something we could get sent to us.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The next account is the water stabilization fund. We do not anticipate using any of those monies. We propose adding to that in terms of the town meeting that's coming up. Next would be the solid waste stabilization fund, 59.370. The budget provides using that entire balance to be applied toward the DPW budget in fiscal year 2014. The Stikney Well Fund, which has been in existence for a number of years, has a balance of 132.919. We do not anticipate using any of those dollars toward the budget. And then we have the cell tower fund, and the cell tower fund has a balance of just over $250,000. We anticipate using $200,000 of that toward the budget. That money is a result of leases that we have on cell towers. Quite a bit of money when people think about the fact that we, at one time, we received nothing. So it is one of those things that we do have leases, and those leases pay, so they bring in about $250,000 or more a year, and we utilize some of those monies toward our budget. The last item that is shown here is we have three enterprise funds, the water enterprise, the Hillview enterprise, and the Hillview Recreation Enterprise. Those monies are reserved for those funds. However, for the purposes of presenting it this evening, we want the public to be aware of the fact that there's $900,000 in those funds. None of it is being used for the budget.
What is the breakdown between each enterprise fund? Do you have a?
Hillview's retained earnings are 580,654. Parks and Recreation retained earnings available is 73,116 as they appropriated $10,000 at October town meeting. And Waters available retained earnings is 268,187.
Thank you. Any further questions on this slide?
I gather that on the water retained earnings, some of that is going to now be put into the stabilization fund?
Yes.
How much are you proposing?
We'd like to put it all in there.
Put it all in there.
Key revenue adjustments. Talked a little bit about this. The unrestricted and Chapter 70 numbers assume the revenues provided in the House Ways and Means budget. That provides about $99,000 of additional revenue to the town that we didn't contemplate back when we began the budget process. We'll take it happily. We've increased the motor vehicle excise tax slightly. Keep in mind that for a number of years, the motor vehicle excise tax revenue increased annually by about 2.5%. That was reflective of just the turnover of vehicles in the community. We've seen a leveling of the amount of revenue that we receive. However, we are comfortable with increasing that slightly. Now, keep in mind that it's a $2 million item, so that the $28,000 increase is quite small as a percentage of the total amount that we have available in that item. And I want to stress that motor vehicle excise tax revenue is vital to the town. There have been, there's been talk in the past about the state eliminating that tax, maybe through referendum or some other process, but that would create a $2 million hole in our budget if that were to happen. The local meals options tax, the total amount budgeted for fiscal 14 is $200,000. That's an increase of $50,000 over this year. So those, the numbers that are ahead of you show you what the incremental increases are in those line items that are being applied toward the budget. The ambulance fund we've talked about, it's presently, we budget $265,000 for it. We're contemplating an increase of $42,000. We talked about the sanitation stabilization fund utilizing 59,325. The increase, money coming out of the debt capital stabilization fund is $64,000. That will basically drain that money, that account down to its last dollars. And it will be vital that going forward, we look to replenish that account. We look to replenish that account for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's been used as an offset toward the debt service cost in the budget. But the second commitment that was made is it's going to be used for funding for capital items going forward. So it's vital that we have a debt capital stabilization fund that's available and funded, and what we intend to do is to review budgets going into June town meeting and where there are surpluses. We will identify where those surpluses may be targeted to this account. We may also target free cash, remaining free cash going to this account. And then lastly, there are some miscellaneous revenues that we receive, such as bond premiums. Bond premiums not associated with the high school, but general fund bond premiums that we may put into the debt capital stabilization fund. We're increasing the amount that comes from enterprise fund indirect costs. Keep in mind that each enterprise fund operates as its own business center. And as operating as their own business center, where there are services that are provided by the general fund, the town government, those business centers or enterprise funds then pay the town. The biggest piece of that would be for the cost of insurance, property and liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, and health insurance. But they also pay their cost of utilities, the cost of payroll, the cost of accounting, the cost of purchasing. All of those costs are calculated out and approved and enter into the total amount that we have available in enterprise fund indirect revenue. The total revenue amount is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but this is, shows you merely what the increase is that is going toward the budget. And then the last item that we use, and we began this practice last year, was to utilize a portion of our free cash, 214,743, to go toward two non-recurring costs in the budget. Last year we used, I believe it was a bit more because we were funding some items in the ALS startup program through free cash. But this shows an amount for the phase out of the one-time 15% longevity benefit, which will be ending June 2014. The amount is about $181,000. And the other item is the final payment under the repayment to the U.S. Department of Justice for the COPS grant program that existed back in the early 2000s, and we're repaying back that amount of money. Those two amounts total this figure that you see here, and more importantly, they don't exist, we don't have those spending obligations going forward. Before I flip on, any questions about this page?
Mr. Frisco.
Can we just hear from FinCom on the last slide and this slide, if they have any comments?
I don't know if they've had time to digest it.
Have you had any chance to look this over up till now?
I looked it over with Greg this morning. We, the committee has not seen it, we'll see it Thursday night.
The budget, key budget drivers in summary, and it's hard to put them all on one page, but we've tried to do it. The amount for veterans' assistance has grown significantly. It's reflective of, again, the number of veterans who have come back that require services, or some of our aged and elderly veterans are entitled to veterans' assistance. So the growth in this budget item is 166% from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Those dollars are $211,350, and I want to assure you that those are all in the forms of veterans' benefits. So they're not other amounts that may be in the budget that people will be asking about. They all are direct costs that go to citizens in the community. And the town has reimbursed 75 cents on the dollar for every dollar that it expensed for veterans' benefits. So we do have to lay out this money, and in return, on the revenue side, we bring in money, we'll be bringing in some money, not for this year, but for two fiscal years ago because there's always a lag in terms of monies that we spend and reimbursement that we receive from the Commonwealth. But it is a significant budget driver, and it was a budget driver that wasn't there a couple of years ago. It's something that recently has beginning, began growing, and it's not unique to North Reading. It's something that you see throughout the Commonwealth, and if you follow the news, you see that it's something that actually is taking place nationwide.
If I can just add to that, I recently had a conversation with the state compliance officer from the Veterans Administration. He'd come in, he paid a visit here probably two, three weeks ago, spent some time with our veterans' agent, spent some time with our treasurer. The comments back from the Veterans Administration is that our veterans' agent and our treasurer do nothing but the best job in terms of how they submit their forms to the state so that we get our reimbursement as quickly as possible. He's never seen another town that does the job that our veterans' agent and our treasurer do in order to make sure, one, our veterans get every penny they deserve, and two, the community gets back their reimbursement as quickly as possible. Those are the comments from the compliance officer for the Veterans Administration. So I applaud Susan Magna for all the efforts that she puts out to make sure the deserving men and women that serve this country get what they're entitled to. So I thank you. So although it's a budget driver here, but it's something that we should be more than willing to pay for.
The next item that we've identified is the one-time 15% longevity benefit. I mentioned earlier that one of the key budget goals was to achieve long-term savings through changes in our labor contracts. And this represents the final year of the 15% longevity benefit. So the number is high. The number is high for two reasons. It is the most senior employees who are taking this benefit, and it is also probably your higher-paid employees who are taking this benefit. So this is not reflective of any one department. This benefit exists throughout many of the labor contracts and non-labor contracts in the town, including department heads, and including all of our municipal departments. So it's a one-time 15% increase for any employee who has worked 10 years or longer. And again, that benefit is being phased out with the coming fiscal year 2014 budget. But it is a key cost, and it's a significant cost because in years gone by, that benefit has cost us in the range of $60,000 a year. So if you kind of look at that in terms of the fact there is a major cost in this year's budget that's attributable to that benefit.
Mr. Frisco.
I want to go back to the veterans just for a second. The, according to recently published cherry sheet, the reimbursement on benefits is $154,000. Is that the number you've applied?
No, we're sticking with the House One numbers because there's some other changes where we dropped down in other areas too.
This is the House?
It just came out today, though.
Yes, right.
Right, we're sticking with the numbers that we have.
So what was the, I'm sorry, what was the number you had?
145.
But there's some decreases in other.
145, 128.
Okay, so you were using the first.
Right, there's other decreases that we.
The state giveth and the state taketh. The giveth on veterans' benefits.
Yeah, no, I can see that.
Information systems, the increase is attributable to the role of our ambulance program and costs associated with it.
Can I stop you there? I'm sorry. All right, I'm just trying to process this. If we're supposed to get back 75 cents of the dollar, how does that number change, and why are you taking that?
It's usually an offset on the.
On the cherry sheet?
No, it's an offset on the, on the local receipts. It shows up as an offset. What Greg is saying is that he's used the original number of 145 in the revenue plan rather than 154.
Gasoline and diesel fuel, this is the first year that we've had a consolidated fuel account of all of our municipal departments. There is an increase that's shown of $16,230. It's reflective of what our best estimate is of fuel prices and fuel usage going forward. Our capital improvements, we've budgeted $56,000 in raising appropriate revenues to go toward capital.
I'll go back to gasoline and diesel fuel.
Yes.
All right, so best guess in terms of pricing, but what are you doing in terms of mileage? What's the factor there? And what are you using for your best guess in terms of cost per gallon?
The gallon use is, on diesel, is flat, so we're not projecting a significant increase in the amount of diesel fuel that we use. We do show a slight uptick in our unleaded gas usage.
Which is due to emergency operations during Hurricane Sandy and the blizzard in February.
All right, but that's unordinary. So why is that factored into any increase for the next?
Because we're seeing these storm events happen more frequently now. As a rule, I think we can all attest to the fact that we're going through a particular period where we're seeing more in the way of events, and we are just trying to accommodate the fact that we think that there may be an increase in usage.
And I know I haven't seen, I know we consolidated another DPW budget, gasoline started this fiscal year, but I thought there was supposed to be internal tracking of each department.
Can you?
Have you seen that?
No, that's one of my questions.
Yeah, we have, we have some detail.
Mr. Frisco?
You know, this is one of the issues we, I brought up when we had our initial budget hearing. I'm not in favor of this money at all because this number's actually larger than what's being shown because you actually had one department that implemented an efficiency program, made some changes in their standing operating procedure and idling and things like that. And yes, they did purchase cars that have, newer cars that have some better efficiency as well, which is all great. But you know, Greg, your very first slide, you put up your goals, and one of the things that is completely missing from your goals is challenging any of your departments to come up with efficiencies. Like, that was not a goal at all this year, and it's clear in all the budgets. And so you have one department that actually had a significant reduction in their demand for gasoline. You have to add that into that number, so that number's actually largest. And I don't think, because you don't have a goal as the town administrator to have any efficiencies, no one else is going to have any efficiencies. And I'd rather stop not approve this money and put it back on the department heads to work together collectively to try to come up with some efficiencies to try to conserve fuel. The answer can't just be, eh, just increase it 8.3%. That's not a good answer. And it's not very good that we don't even have a goal in our whole overall strategy for our budgets this year to even look at any efficiencies, not only in gas, but in anything we do. That's all I have to say about it. So I'm not in favor, and I'm not going to be voting in favor of that.
Please put something.
Mr. Ford?
Greg, has there been a, I understand the cost of gas has gone up over the last several years, but has, as far as mileage goes, has there been a significant reduction or any reduction at all?
No, pretty, pretty flat.
The other side. That's, thank you.
That's good.
This isn't Dropbox. You have to look it up. No, there's actually one by departments in there as well. It's in Dropbox. You would ask, you want to see it by department. It is in there.
Do you want to see it or?
Put it up, please.
It's actually under, if you go into the FY 2014 budget.
Okay.
The second one down. So you can see that fire had an increase, town administrator has an increase, DPW has an increase, and schools pretty much went down, whatever the other guys went down, almost stayed the same. So it's really just three departments. So you actually even had some other departments went down or just stayed the same. So that just kind of solidifies what I'm trying to say is that it's not really $16,000. It's more than that. When you have other people trying to conserve, make savings, we've spent that savings and more now.
I can't do it this way. If I look at it, the.
Hang on. Mr. Frisco?
I guess if I look at 2013, the DPW has taken a big jump of the year before, but averaged it out, it's not quite as big a jump. There's probably some reason behind it. The police are on their way down. I assume that's got to do with the new vehicles and item issues that they've addressed. Fire is pretty consistent.
Yeah, and you know, fire has, you know, when the chief came in, he presented his call, his arraignment. And I don't think it was just anomaly. I think his.
What's the, what's the total amount of the fuel budget?
212,000.
212?
That's what.
That's being requested for FY 14.
That's what.
It's 196.
The current is 196, up $16,000.
An 8% increase.
8% increase.
No one can tell what the cost of fuel is going to be tomorrow or next day.
No, yeah, $16,000 out of $200,000 budget, 8%. In the whole scheme of things, it's pretty small.
Mr. Frisco?
It's not about the money, Mr. Olerich. It's about leadership. It's about managing. It's about trying to instill in all our department heads to work together to try to find efficiencies rather than just come back and say, I'll just take an 8.3% increase. That's what's been done here, and I'm not in favor of it. That's not leadership. That's not managing.
We just got through saying that there were certain departments and all the departments, a lot of the departments have already looked at doing the efficiency thing, talking about lease time and the idling time.
One department.
You know.
On their own, by the way.
I think.
They did it on their own. You saw, you saw the goals of the town administrator. Then there's not one goal in there to talk about efficiencies. To, as part of this strategy for FY 2014 budgeting, looking at efficiencies and working together was not one of the goals. It's concerning to me, and that is what, this is what happens. You know, you say it's $16,000, but there's probably a lot more in here throughout all these budgets because we didn't really take any time to look at efficiencies.
Greg, in terms of coming up with usage, what did you do? How did you arrive at the figure that you're comfortable with? From 2013 to 13, get this laid out. How did you come to determine what is appropriate for 2014?
We, we took the, what we considered to be the average fuel usage. We, we applied an increase for the estimate of gasoline. We estimated that it was going to be 334 a gallon. We made that as an estimate. There's an increase in cost associated with that, 334, about 5.9%. And then we estimated that diesel fuel will be available at $3.65 a gallon or an increase of 7.9%. So what we tried to do is we tried to come up with costs that we considered to be average based upon our analysis of what the trend has been over a period of years, and that's, that's how we came up with the numbers that we have.
Thank you. Greg, further on fuel?
Well, I think, I think what Mike is referring to is not the, you know, per gallon cost of gas or diesel. He's talking about total amount of fuel used.
Also the consumption.
And that, you know, it looks like diesel is flat between 2012 and 13, and gasoline is up by some amount. I can't extrapolate off of, I guess maybe the numbers are in here somewhere. So, now, I can understand guessing at a budget amount on the basis of the cost of fuel, right? But I think Mike is right to some degree associated with the number of gallons being budgeted. So, I mean, Greg, do you have the amount of gasoline gallons that you budgeted, that you're using between 2013 and 14?
It's on that, that graph chart.
Yeah, they don't have it by department.
It's on the graph chart. It's a little hard to extrapolate. I mean, if I look at gasoline under, let me go back to gallons used. Diesel gallons are up and down over the period, which, you know, you'd have to tie back to what went on that year. Gasoline usage is on a slow ramp up from 2008.
I think there have been a number of emergencies and storm incidents during that period of time that are well documented.
So it was, you know, arrived at, from the FY 10 to FY 12 average fuel use across the board, not just by, not per department. It was per town, the town's usage. And also done with the trends of the increases per gallon, and that's how the 8.3% increase was arrived at.
Well, I guess I care less about the dollar amount and more about.
Gallons.
The increase or decrease in gallons.
Consumption.
Yeah, consumption.
Well, we did take into effect that, account the average fuel usage over that period of time in gallons, not, not dollar amount.
Okay.
And then we compared it to the market of how fuel is fluctuating.
Yeah. I mean, that's the guess by.
Mr. Ford? Greg, I think my big concern is that mileage hasn't, over the course of the last years, hasn't reduced at all. And I think that's a big concern, the fact that, as Michael says, we've got new vehicles which, compared to the older vehicles, get better math, gas mileage. But also that there should be some plan in place to try and curtail the high usage. I mean, I understand that there are certain places where you can't, but there has to be some places where we can look at mileage and, you know, you can look at certain departments and figure out if certain guys are working in the same areas or something like that, but to, you know, I just, I can't believe there's no reduction at all in the last five years.
Again, the thing that we point out is that we're having two severe events a year. This past year, we had the February blizzard and we had Hurricane Sandy. Prior to that, we've had a number of severe events that have come up. And just by the number of times that we receive federal reimbursement for different disasters that are declared throughout the Commonwealth is indicative of the fact that we're having more events, and when there is a need for emergency, the public safety DPW does roll, and there is additional mileage that's incurred during those events. And certainly, there's a possibility that we may be going into a quieter period. We don't know. We don't know, but we do know that we were averaging about two severe events a year and that during those periods of time, we do see increased mileage.
But if you're seeing those two severe events per year, every year, that would be level every year, and we should still start talking about some reduction in, in usage. It's not as if you're saying we had a severe, two severe events this year and not last year, that's what's causing us to have the increase. You're saying it's, that's what we've been seeing the past several years for, twice a year. I don't understand.
Keep in mind that this is the first year that the budget has been isolated. In the past, if there was an increase in cost, it's possible that it was paid for within each individual department budget. Fuel prior to this year was buried in each department budget. This is the first year that we've presented fuel as its own center, its own cost center. Appreciate the fact that it's drawn the board's attention. I think it does need a close looking at, and certainly will respect any decisions that the board comes out in terms of its budget recommendations.
Okay, my only comment concerning that, though, would you propose consolidating it last year? I would imagine what you did, or your staff did, was taking a look at each department, what they had used over the past three years, and then had your gallon, cost per gallon factored in, just like you did here. So as Mr. Ford said, we have those events prior to this year, so it should or shouldn't have been factored in. That shouldn't be a factor now, even though the fuel, cost of fuel was within each independent, each individual department budget. Does that make sense?
It does, and they said this is the recommendation that we've come up with.
Beat this up really good. Yeah, Mr. Frisco?
Just about, I think some of our guests are pretty cold. Can you use that remote control and turn the air conditioning down or?
Absolutely.
Maybe hand it to Mr. DeColer if you wouldn't mind and help keep some of our guests from freezing the death back there.
Yeah, we don't want to have to put the heat on.
Well, you know, Mr. Delaney, this, this board actually approved this whole consolidation as a three to two vote. And I really do, I was the one voted against it, and I still think we should reconsider and move it back into the budgets and put the responsibility of managing fuel back to the department heads, the ones that manage their departments and run them every day. Consolidating them up, I think, makes the whole process blurry, and there's really no accountability, and there's really no way for us to even have a logical conversation about it. You can see how long we focused on $16,000. The issue isn't the money, it's the way we're managing. That's the problem here. So we should really just stop talking about the money, focus on the management, because that alone will save us money. So I'd like the board to reconsider the way we're doing the budgets for next year, for 2014, and put it back in the budgets, not too late. Put it back in the hands of the department heads.
You still there?
I guess I'm a bit puzzled. I believe the Finance Department, the administration, manage the budget well, manage each individual department well. I think they hold, I think the administration holds the department heads accountable for what they're expending, whether it be within their specific line item or within some consolidated item such as, such as fuel. I think that the approach that the Finance Director and the town administrator have taken is reasonable. They've taken the average over the last three years of the amount of gas consumption, averaged it for the, what I think is fairly reasonable figures. There's not inflated figures at all as far as the cost of, anticipated cost of gasoline and diesel fuel, and come up with a number. You know, as far as conservation efforts, I mean, that comes through purchase of more gas-efficient vehicles. I don't think that the new police vehicles are any more or less efficient necessarily from a mileage standpoint. I think they function better, but mileage standpoint, I don't think there's much difference. I don't think we have people within general government joyriding excessively around town and not conserving fuel. I think they're going about their business and responding to the needs of the community, whether it be emergency purposes, police, fire, ambulance, whether it be inspectional services, whether it be recreational people meeting the needs of maintaining parks, recreational areas, DPW. Again, where there are, well, we may be expending more money on fuel in one area to undertake projects rather than contracting out, which actually saves us money. You've got to spend a little to make a lot. So I, again, I'm not, maybe I'm not putting the same level of prioritization here, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I think the criticism that's being levied is somewhat unfair and maybe unsubstantiated. You know, I think the approach has been pretty reasonable. Three-year average. Three-year average based upon a reasonable cost per gallon for unleaded fuel and diesel fuel comes to a number. So, I guess I'm missing the point in beating this up for half an hour or more. Is it the money? Not necessarily. Is it the principle? Sure, I can appreciate that and I certainly would embrace the administration of moving forward with some sort of efforts for conservation purposes in relation to minimizing the amount of usage of, of public vehicles when it makes sense. I believe that there have been some attempts to do that, but, no, I guess I'm missing. Beating this to death, I'm missing the quite a lot of it, I guess.
Mr. Valley Thomas, you wish to continue?
I do, please. Thank you, Liz. So, the next item that is a, it's not really a significant cost driver, but we did want to identify it in the budget, was the $56,000 that's being earmarked and set aside for capital improvements. It's the first year that we will begin funding capital improvements from recurring revenues, not from free cash. The dollar amount is not significant, but the change in terms of how we fund these things is significant in terms of the fact that we wish to begin setting aside monies in our budgeting process. And if you look at the budget sheets that we've produced for this evening, the summary sheets, we actually have capital as a fixed cost. We want to be able to start budgeting for our capital items as part of the fixed cost portion of our budget. And that's a result of the efforts of the capital improvement committee. The next item that we have shown here, and it is not something that's easily identifiable or known in the budget, is we've gone ahead and calculated out what the cost of living pay increase equates to in terms of dollars in the budget. And this is for all of our departments that have settled contracts for next fiscal year. And that's everyone but for the fire department. So, all departments have a 2% cost of living increase built into their contracts. The approximate cost of that 2% increase is $177,160. And again, it's not an insignificant cost. We want people to understand that when they are considering the level services budget, there's money in each department that we've included for the 2% cost of the increase and the total of that, again, is the amount that is shown here. Other items that we have not funded in the budget and we wish to state what those are upfront is the, there's a vacant position in the community planning commission. It was originally the assistant planner slash GIS. We have not funded that position in the community planning commission. Instead, we've taken out half of the dollars and we've put it into the DPW budget for the purposes of providing annual updating services to our maps and GIS system. But we've not funded the remaining piece, which is in the community planning commission and the cost of that is $13,000. There was a building maintenance position that was requested by DPW for our municipal buildings and facilities. The cost of that was almost $20,000, we have not funded that. And then the final item that we have not funded is there are four positions that are budgeted in the recreation budget for summer help. We've not funded those positions. Our reason in being is those should be funded through the retained earnings that are available through the recreation enterprise fund and not something that's a cost through the general fund. We don't have an objection if that's through the retained earnings in that department. Further questions about this page?
Well, probably Mr. Masary.
Would you clarify, when we discussed the library budget in May, and that is in the budget, correct? And there was a request in the library for additional hours and that's not in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So, we've met the mark, the MAR is the state standard that Delaney spoke to when she came in and met with the board on her budget presentation. And so, we've met that MAR and provided a little bit of extra money to the tune of $5,300. Our feeling is that there will be other costs associated with the library budget once we reach the population threshold of $15,000. And the appropriate time to discuss increasing in staffing is when we reach that threshold. We're not quite there.
I just wanted to get that clarified.
Mr. Stevens.
Did you like me to speak on the summer help now or would you like?
Sure. Actually.
Can we, yeah.
Or do you want to wait until after?
Just to cover a couple of things first and then we can get into that? Just a couple of things I think I'm missing from that bottom one as well.
I do want to talk about it before we move forward.
Do it after?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Mr. Prisco, his words are wisdom over here.
No, but we had a lengthy discussion about adding, potentially looking at, considering adding a new finance support staff in the budget. Did that just go away? Is it, is it included? Is it not included?
It's not included. It was never considered as part of our, our financing committee.
And the school resource officer is included or not?
It is.
It is.
Conservation. It's here.
Conservation.
Remember, we were talking about the $10,000 for the conservation, it's in here.
And then, I said one, one last thing. And then, we can talk about parks. The school wastewater facility, the school's supposed to open in September 2014. And once we open up that facility, we're going to have to have either some kind of maintenance or an operation system going on. I assume we're going to be putting that in place and getting it up and running prior to the September timeframe of, for, so wouldn't we need some money in this year's budget to capture the services that are associated with that wastewater treatment facility that's going to be up and running? I'm not sure. We never talked about it, but I meant to bring it up prior. I did bring it up to you, Mr. Delaney.
We've discussed it, financial planning team. The professionals are working on what that cost factor is going to be. We don't know what it is at the present time. So, hasn't been presented to the building committee yet. So, we just have to come back and ask for it.
Okay. Do we have to allocate those some money, something in the FY 2014 budget? Or do you, no risk in it?
I would hope that any staff related to that is tied to the cost of money. It's actually in the budget.
Oh, okay.
I would hope.
Okay. That I had never heard.
But that's something that you.
So, I'm bringing it up. I just want to make sure we capture that.
Yeah, I'm like-minded with Mr. Masary. I would hope that if there's some sort of package treatment plan that was required in relation to the new facilities, it needs to be up and going at a particular time when the, when the new high school opens, that would have been included in the overall plan for the new facility.
I don't disagree. I think what Mr. Prisco's getting at is the ongoing operation of wastewater.
Not, a little bit of that.
That would be following his budget.
But because the school's supposed to open in September 2014, I would assume they're going to be bringing some folks on, get that system up and running. There's going to have to be some administrator there, probably two or three months in advance, getting it up and running, make sure it's working properly before we open it up for the kids to move in. So, that will happen under our FY 2014 budget. If you look at it from the month perspective, it will fall in the third quarter, the fourth quarter of our operating budget. I just want to make sure we capture that expense. Is it going to be captured, like Mr. Masary's saying, in the, in the debt money that we've actually went out and borrowed? Or are we going to be capturing it in our operating budget? We shouldn't lose sight of it. That's, I don't want to get caught off guard when we get into the fourth quarter.
Won't that be in the first quarter of the fiscal 15, March of June?
Potentially, depending upon when it's, when it's built and when it's.
It all depends. That's why, that's why I'm asking. I don't know. I don't know when you, when this thing's going to get up and running, I don't, that's why I'm asking. I'd rather bring it up now and make sure we don't get ourselves caught off guard. We're going to be running it in sometime in May, April, May of next year? It needs, we need to know where that operating money is coming from.
I would think that would be incumbent upon the school department, the school department to operate that within their budget proposal and request in anticipation of whatever their needs are going to be, if it's not included, initial startup not included in the project budget.
I mean, that being said, I think that's a fair question to ask.
So, we're meeting Wednesday night.
Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Foddy? Just a, Greg, can you elaborate on that? You said the CPC vacant position, 50% savings, the other 50% was going to where?
DPW.
And what's that going to be?
We wish to have, be, not be an employee, to be a contract service in the DPW to provide annual updating of our assessing maps and our GIS maps. Once that, we have a hosting service right now, our mapping system is up to date, we want to be able to put money into the budget to make sure it stays up to date on an annual basis.
Thank you.
And I presume that there has been some discussion with CPC and they're not lodging an objection?
They know that we're not funding it.
Okay. But what is, what is their, what is their position on?
Unclear, but we, they're clear of our intentions.
I did talk to Mr. Pierce about it and he was very disappointed to hear that this is going to be going away and that they're just going to fund some of the work through the DPW. So, I, I had asked, actually, when we had our budget hearing and this came out, I had actually asked you if you would please have somebody reach out to the planning department and have some level of communications before we just go off and make this change. I'm almost certain that did not happen and it's unfortunate.
Well, we had a department chair here.
We did.
We had, we had the planning director here to bring back the message, too. And again, I think we, all of us were a little bit disappointed there wasn't a representative from the CPC here to assist her in her budget presentation.
I just wanted to clarify, I had a conversation with the planning director very clearly that this is what our intent was.
In this.
Well, I'm just saying, I had that conversation.
And this has been in the CPC budget for a number of years that's gone.
Unfunded.
Unfunded.
Yes.
Been funded, but unfunded.
Unfunded, that's correct.
Right? Okay. Thank you. Opportune time to bring up parking record. Stevens.
I'm bringing everybody.
Yep. Amareen Stevens, the operations director, department head of Parks and Recreation. Just to clear up the number and how the number came about. When we met on March 4th, I presented our budget and I had mentioned that there would be some cuts that we had to make in order to meet our budget. And in that, it was cutting seasonal personnel. There was three recreation positions as well as a parks position. Those were personnel cuts. It was not equal to $16,000. What was said was that since 2008, we lost, from 2008 till now, about $15,930 in league fees. So, and that's our blood. So, with that cut, we had to make some cuts from our budget. So, I have a little handout here that'll assist you on what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Just kind of give you a guideline.
We have an extra one for?
I do.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over. Grant?
Was this shared with the administration prior to right now?
Excuse me?
Was this shared with Liz and Greg?
We had a quick talk about what was going on. We had never had something, we didn't have any pressure. So, the cuts to the personnel on our end for the summer in Parks recreational help actually totals $9,164. Has recreation personnel, the 1,200, the 2808, the 1156. Those are the names of the positions on the left. Parks personnel was $4,000. So, we also cut on our working draft of our budget, $8,000 to replace a 20-year-old mower. We're not funding that this year, although it's sorely needed as well as the personnel is sorely needed. We just couldn't put it in our budget. We couldn't find the opportunity to do it. We're hoping the next fiscal year, we can do it. We also did not fund emergency repairs in our budget. We always have, we generally try to. We just left it empty in our emergency repairs with the thought that if there is an emergency repair, we could go to our retained earnings to do that. You can fund that from the retained earnings. So, we didn't fund any of these things from a retained earnings, these particular things. These were direct cuts out of our budget. We also had, as like Greg had his slides, we've had some significant increases in our budget as well. Our permanent personnel for our particular fiscal year 14 was an additional 15,277. We have some stipends that I had to put in there. We need some overtime for the DPW union. They're called a lot for emergency calls to the park. We have car accidents that actually happen in the park or vandalism that happens and we have to bring them in. They come in on a Sunday, it's double time. So, I definitely put some, you know, put some increases in that, $2,300, just to try to make that. So, we cut 22,164 from our budget, but we have direct increases just for that of $18,000. So, just some of the notes, we had to make cuts to the summer personnel to address increases in expenses. We don't want to do it, we don't like to do it. It makes for much better programs if we have all this and makes it much easier for the parks director if we have these positions. Cutting it may place a limit on the number of children that we're able to take this to our summer program possibly. We've always had pretty much a, almost an open door maximum policy. However, if we have less personnel, we have to put in limit to a 7:30 to 5:30 program that a lot of the parents use for daycare. And it's a very low-cost alternative for people to those camps that might cost $200, $300 a week. We're far under that. We're in the $120 range. Yeah. So, you know, they'll directly affect the director's workload. So, and also, as part of our revenue budget, we also funded in our revenues, $5,000 in a thousand-dollar gift from our friends of, that's part of our revenue. So, that's a fundraiser thing, as well as $15,000 in fundraising from our constant barbecue. So, those are in ours. And just to kind of review our retained earnings, as Liz had said, our fiscal year 12 certified balance was 83,116. We did encumber, so to speak, if we need it this year, $10,000. We hope not to need it, but if it is encumbered with the fact that we may need it. So, that brings it down to that $73,000 number that Liz had mentioned. As well as in fiscal year 14, we've also, to balance our budget, used eight more thousand of that. So, if we used all that after the end of fiscal year 14, it would be 65 if we didn't put any into it or if we used exactly what we said. So, if we don't use it and we make some really good savings and we bring in more revenue, we're hoping that to increase and if that happens. So, when the offer was made that maybe the town could help us with some assistance to bring back the personnel, it's not directly $16,000 for recreation summer help, it does include other things. So, was the $16,000 number came from the fact that I had said that we had lost about $16,000 over the last four years in league fees. So, that's where that number came from. And they had asked, gee, if we, if you were given some of that money back, would you hire those positions back? And we said, absolutely. We absolutely would do that. So, if we don't get the money, it's going to make it very, very difficult because we have cut it from our budget. So, it isn't $16,000, like the number that's up there, if it's specific to personnel, it's $9,164 as well as the capital mower, as well as emergency repairs, just so you can see how we came to that number.
Excuse me, if I could just also add, just so that you understand that, I've already done all my interviewing and I haven't hired anyone, waiting to see if we have any funding for it. I have to get them all first aid, CPR trained and trained to be counselors, the people that I'm bringing in new. So, waiting this long has really left us on a, I already lost my full-time person that I had as my assistant that's been with me for three years now, found another position. So, I've already lost her and if I do get the approval, I have to hire someone and completely retrain them on our entire office system, which she had down pat. It was a great help to me, which freed me up to run, you know, I run camps, I probably have, every single week this summer, I have at least two, three camps every week outside of our regular day camp, sports camps, art camps, you know.
Drama camps.
Yeah. Lego camps, everything you can imagine, they're all out there. And I am visiting all those camps and getting them all set up. I can't be in every location. And so, I've already lost that one person that I really counted on. So, I guess by asking the board for our help in this, it will help us to move forward. And at least if I do get the money, I need to move really quickly and get these people first aid, I've got first aid CPR training coming up through the police station. I've got first aid CPR training coming up through the police station in just a couple of weeks. And I also need to train them for the position in general. So it's kind of set us way back. And out of the group I interviewed back in March, I don't even know if any of them have found summer jobs or not yet. And I'm hoping that the kids that I've narrowed down to who I will hire will still be available to me should the funds come through. But it's putting us on a timeframe now where I'm not usually in this position. I'm usually hired, staffed, trained, and ready to roll by this time.
Mr. Ford?
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the summer playground program, how many participants?
Well, it depends. Like we said, we have walk-in opportunities, which is a flexible program, which no other town has, which parents love. So we range anywhere, I would say we range between 50, and our highest numbers would be up near 90, which they haven't been hitting that high the last couple of years. But we did hit it for many years.
Per week?
Per day.
Per day.
And then we have another program. We have two camps, and the other program allows 30 toddlers a day in it. And we only, and we cap that at 30 because of the age of the children and the size of the building. But our other program, we've left open-handed, and what I do is I staff to take up to 90, and then I have that full-time person that I said is my assistant. Should I need them, I usually take them on field trips. I go on every field trip. So we bring in any personnel we need to staff up when the numbers go up a little higher. But potentially, if I cut the three positions, I could cut up to 30 kids a day that would not be able to come should they show up.
Just on the retained earnings also.
Mm-hmm.
So you have budgeted in 13, $10,000, and 14, $8,000. Those for emergencies?
No, those are part of our revenues, as necessary to balance our budget. $8,000 to balance our budget for 14, and $10,000 was to balance our budget in 13. So we're using it
Okay.
Because of our revenues decreasing.
I thought, I heard that $10,000 was there for emergencies, and you haven't used any of it yet, and $8,000 was used to offset the losses in your budget for fiscal 14.
No, these are for, no.
Okay.
I mean, we, it's part of our budget. For 13, we have, for instance, a $12,000 expense to repair the Ipsa Trevor Park tennis courts. We're hoping, Marty has looked into a different opportunity. We may have some significant cost savings on that, and we're hoping that that'll come to fruition this spring, that we'll save and not have to spend that much. And if that happens, we may not need to use that. But I don't know that. I might have some difficulty with revenues in other areas as well.
I just want everybody to know, it'd be nice to get some support from the town. We strive under tough conditions. We rely on user fees in youth sports. That's our driving revenue on our end. The numbers are down, but just the youth sports groups aren't the only one utilizing what we have in town. And you live around the Ipsa Trevor Park every day, and there's people walking, there's a lot of passive areas. I'd say 70% of what we take care of is just open space where people can come from other towns or at the groups and just come and utilize the parks. We try to use, become, be as efficient as we can. I mean, we team up with the school department, share equipment. We utilize, trying to work together is, you know, with their department, so that we're getting things done more efficiently. Proof is in the pudding. Drive around, look at the things we take care of. That's all I can say. I mean, some support would be helpful. I mean, we do a lot of things of, as you mentioned, the barbecues, the Fourth of July. These are things that puts a lot of effort on our part, but we don't see any revenue for it. The barbecues, a lot of volunteer work, on people's own time, but in that supplement, you know, I mean, in putting it in the budget. You know, we do the best we can, and I think we really appreciate your support. I mean, we go above and beyond, and that's all I can say.
Take care of hundreds of acres.
I mean, I can tell you, we take care of 87 acres of parks. I have two full-time guys. Four basketball courts, two tennis courts, hockey rinks, skatepots, volleyball, two horseshoes, one rec center, four soccer fields, seven softball fields, two big league baseball fields, four little league baseball fields, three playgrounds, concession stands.
I got a question regarding, I guess, softball and baseball fields, the major league baseball fields.
Yes.
Most often, those are used by school, correct?
Both.
But unlike, correct me if I'm wrong, but unlike what we do for other departments where there's some indirect cost to get adjusted, is there any such thing on, in terms of the school department, paying you for the indirect cost of the time that you spend on, I presume one of the major league fields is the high school varsity field?
Yes.
The other would be the hood school field?
Correct.
And three softball fields are not only used by town programs, it's also used by the schools. So maybe this is a better question for the finance director.
Want me to explain how that works? We feel obligated to help out and take care of it because we utilize it too for our programs.
No, I know, but what we do on the town side, we try to take a percentage in terms of what's being used, a percentage, say water. Someone can give a better example than I'm saying.
And the other enterprise funds, water being one of them, there's some indirect costs, in other words, the cost of Greg's time, the finance director's time, and other, and the director of public works. So they get, the enterprise fund gets charged for a portion, a small portion of their salaries. So I think what the chairman's trying to say is, the time, the level of effort and time you put into taking care of those fields for the high school, should there be an indirect expense to the schools for that?
I don't know if you can do it backwards on enterprise, that we'd have to, I'm not sure.
Can I enter that? Can I attempt to enter that? The school fields, so they do not charge us on outdoor facilities. They don't, the school does not charge us to use the school fields. They allow recreation, park and recreation to use the fields, say 50% on the leagues. We collect the user fee for it, and the school doesn't ask us back anything.
Right.
So our share, basically, is we give labor, and we give labor, and we spend money on it, and we help them because we don't get charged for it. For things like the summer program, when we have to go inside the school, there is a fee for that recreation to the school, because we don't have anything to offer them back to get the indoor buildings we have, because we don't have indoor buildings. So it has always been, and we felt relatively fair, although, you know, the amount of time park and recreation works on this, but we get the fields for nothing, and we get the user fee for it.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Ford?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, you stated earlier, when you were before us, too, that the revenue is down because utilization is down, not as many people in the programs.
Right.
You're looking for $16,000, and maybe that title is wrong.
Right.
Right. So if you don't get the $16,000, right?
Right.
What gives?
What gives is basically the three positions. Well, it's three for recreational, one
What gives in terms of programs that then relate back to revenue?
The cut of people being able to come into my program is what I would have to cut. That's where I would have to put it.
And how does that impact revenue?
Well, obviously, if people can't come to us, they're not going to, they're not going to be
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right.
It has a direct impact on revenue.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So maybe this will be, no, I think it ties in.
Okay, good.
So your upper limit was 90. So without this funding, where are you drawing that maximum number at?
That's what I just said. It would depend on where I shift my personnel, but I could be down 30 kids. It could be 21 program and 10 in the other. It depends on where I shift my personnel. But I would say I could be down about 30 kids on any given day, excuse me. And, you know, if I lose a customer once, I could lose them forever. They find another, they find a wide program or someplace else to go, and then I don't have to directly
No, I just think the other thing you need to consider is, other than the income coming in, is you're also affecting the lives of 30 families, too. You know, I mean, that's, to me, that's a bigger impact than the amount of money that's coming in.
Right. You have to make a judgment. What Lynn's saying is, remember, we're, because of the way the budgets work, we have to anticipate three months in advance, four months in advance, if you're hiring, assuming that that's going to, you know, happen. Some years, you might have a ratio of how many children you have.
I have, it depends on which camp. My toddler camp, I have about six kids per counselor, because they're toddlers. And my older kids, I have between eight to 10 kids per counselor.
I think the other thing you've got to keep in mind, too, is you're essentially kind of getting some free help when the counselors are training. I don't mean that to be, and the fact that they, they actually pay a small, they're $25 a week.
They pay $25.
But you're getting a little bit of help.
Excuse me, they pay $25 a week, and they go on a field trip that I pay for them to go on a field trip?
For free.
And they get a T-shirt that I pay for.
Right.
So the $25 only covers my costs. It's a wipe. So they're not paying anything.
Right.
They're covering my costs. And you can say I get free help, and I do from the CITs, and there's some that I have to pay.
Yeah, and I didn't mean, I didn't mean, I didn't mean there's a shot. I meant that you're utilizing any way you can to
Absolutely, I utilize, but they're not first aid or CPR trained.
Right, right.
They can't take the children to the bathroom by themselves, they can't monitor them on a field trip by themselves. So they are extra hands, but they can't
And that's all I meant. I didn't mean, they were more like babysitters.
I think you're complimenting me.
No, no, I'm just saying. It's, I do utilize
I'm going to reconsider my, I'm going to reconsider my thought now.
No, I utilize volunteers everywhere, in all of my programs.
You do a great job.
I utilize seniors in all of my year-round programs. They come and assist in any programs that I need an assistant in. I use the seniors. They do a great job. But my point is, it is, I still have to have the right amount of paid staff.
Right, and I think what I meant by that was, you're going to lose some counselors and training because you don't have
Because I have positions, and I don't have positions for them.
Right.
That's it. Counselors and trainers come to me hoping to get a job someday. And if no more jobs are opening up and cutting back, then I kind of lose the kids.
Plus, you don't have anybody to supervise them.
Right.
Right, they generally shadow.
Why wouldn't you consider using additional retained earnings to cover that?
Well, we felt, when we were going through our budget review, which was a Parks and Rec meeting, that we've already, we have $83,000. We encumbered 10, another eight. It's just something that we felt, we also didn't fund any emergency repairs. If anything should happen, which has happened before, the pumps at Ipsa Trevor Park, or any emergency things that happen, it's becoming a small, small, little retained earnings fund. And generally, we like to keep about 25% of our budget expenses in there, and it was a decision we all made. It was very, very difficult.
If, can I, if I can address that also?
I think she answered.
No, there's a
I think she answered. I'm not trying to, I just, you know, in, in interest of time.
It's not a lot of money, but it's, isn't a lot of money left in there for $60,000. It's like the Hillview that you used to try to keep happening.
No, I think she said it well. 25% of
Yeah, we replaced the roof at the rec center, and we've replaced the pumps through lightning strikes. There's a $5,000 deductible on the insurance plan. We have to pay the first five. So we've done that. Each year, it seems like we have an, like an emergency expense of some sort that comes up. One was the roof blew off at the rec center from Hurricane Sandy. So we had to pay $5,000, and then the pumps get hit by lightning, they blow. It's, you know, they're, what, about $8,000, $9,000, $5,000 deductible. So we have to, we have to pay that.
So my last question, it's all related to the revenue and the expenditures, is why wouldn't you raise the rates?
That's something that we debated, and it's just something we feel, the user fees are the highest in the state. They're $45 per, and we just think the leagues are already struggling, and we're losing them. We feel that if we raise our rates, they raise their rates, we're just going to lose more. So it's just a decrease, decrease. We're hoping to get more rentals. I rent that turf field as much as I can. I rent Ipsa Trevor Park. I rent that pavilion like it's rented every weekend, twice in one day. So we're doing as much in keeping the prices not too significant to make the people not want to rent from us, but keeping it so that we're getting quick, in a quick turnover and a good, a good value for their money. Most of it's north riding residents running birthday parties, showers, end-of-year graduation parties, so.
So one of the things, just to go back to what you said, was, I'm a former member of the north riding softball and a current member of basketball. I will say, once, once we, once we get our fees increased, we have to increase them. And we have seen a drop in participation in kids.
Right.
And we've had to try and
It's kind of a role.
Yeah, I mean, in the last two years alone, I think you've seen some pretty high numbers in
Right. It's a last, last resort thing that we would ever want to do.
So one question I have, as far as, if I could ask, finance director, this being an enterprise, what's the, what's the effect on if the town wanted to?
Subsidize.
Thank you.
I have some explaining to do, the DOR.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It is something that is allowed. We are a budgeted subsidy. They budget the salaries of the parks director and myself. But it's not, I understand the enterprise, they want
Thank you.
You to be more, they want you to be more self-sufficient. However, we're just in, they want you to be self-sufficient. We're just not there. We're, we're just not big enough. The town and off writing is not big enough to, to as well. If you go to the tag pages, yeah, the enterprise, it does require some explaining, but if you go to the tag pages, we, our budget example is a budgeted subsidy. So if you go all the way down, we would ask for more of a subsidy. It, you know, that's what we do. Right now, our budgeted subsidy on here is 100, it says right here, town subsidy, is $130,808. Those are the two salaries. If you were to give us some more to help us with this personnel issue that we have, or any of the issues that you can help us with, that would increase. So it would just, that's what we are, is a budgeted subsidy. I know that people put out there that, you know, you want to be self-supporting, but we're not there, you know?
So what is the number we're looking for? I mean, because we have $16,000 there, we thought it was for summer help. What's the actual number that?
The number for the summer help is $9,164. That you'll see, if you look down that first page I gave you, you'll see the totals, it'll say personnel, 9,164.
No, I understand, is that all, is that all that we're looking for a subsidy, is the, is the summer help?
This is what we've already, pretty much approved. It's $130,808 is what we've already approved.
I'm talking additional.
Yeah, and this is additional on top of $130,808.
We would take anything the board would love to help us with. The personnel alone is $9,164, because I know it mentions summer help there, so I would just want to make sure that, you know, you, we understand we're all on the same page, that's 9,164. Our capital item to replace our walk behind is 8,000, and to fund our emergency repairs is five. It's your discretion as to what you would be willing to fund, or, and help us out in any way. So I just want, I wanted you to have these numbers so you knew in our budget what we cut, and what the detail of the cuts were in regard to the personnel, and how much they were.
Also, to answer your question on the user fees, what Marty said is 87 acres. Pretty much the little league field is the only field that normally just has little league on it and other things we might rent it from. That's not an area that normal publics goes down and goes into because the gates are locked and they're not supposed to go in there. But every other field that we take care of is open to the public. So our enterprise, unlike the Hillview, the Hillview's not open to the public, but they can go walk their dogs and play ball or anything else on there. They should pay for all, if they're not on there, they pay for the facility to go into the Hillview, or they don't go in there. The water department is an enterprise that you only use water and nothing else useful. We pay for things that the whole town used for. So for that reason, we feel that we're maybe entitled to a little bit of extra money on it. And the fact that what they said is the fundraisers that we do, we're the only enterprise also that has to volunteer to raise twenty-some-odd thousand dollars that we put in to balance our budget. It's not like the P T O that they buy extra things, the money that we've used to raise goes into friends of, that turns around, push back into our budget to pay for things. So we kind of hit twice as a setting policy procedure, and then we turn around and accept the policy procedure and say, and now let's do fundraisers so we can pay for those things we get funded for.
And when we do those fundraisers, we're not, it's employees and, and committee members, and the employees aren't getting paid and we don't put in comp time for it. We're truly volunteering our time to raise money to make our budget work. So, I mean, we put our heart and soul into this department, every one of us does it, you know, we really do want, it's the economy means the world to us. We all treat it like it's our own private company and we work very hard to make it work, it's just not quite there right now.
Question for the town administrator and the finance director. If in fact, we, the board voted to put the sixteen thousand dollars into the budget, and putting aside the issue that the finance director will have with the D O R, and without impacting anything else that we've already approved, can we find the money?
Presently, we don't have it budgeted, Bob.
I'd, I'd like to hear from finance committee, Mr. Keller, or Mr. Palmer.
So we discussed this a little bit going forward, but we didn't have the detail presented us tonight. Our concerns were mostly around an enterprise fund not acting like an enterprise fund and asking for continued increases in subsidies. And even worse, it sounds like the demand is going down. And so it sounds like we could be putting off adjustments in expenses to match revenues or participation or something like that. But then again, we just got this information tonight about this adjustment. So we were mostly concerned about the trajectory of subsidy and it not going in the direction that we thought that enterprises fund should.
Right.
Mr. Keller, would you like to add something?
I think it, it goes beyond that. This hundred and thirty thousand dollar subsidy is up from last year because it's subsidized in two positions.
Correct.
And as the salaries and increase, the subsidy increases.
Correct.
We're looking at sixteen thousand or a twenty-two thousand if we added everything you have here, subsidy.
Those are the cuts that we made.
I look at, at the, the budget here and we're putting fifty-six thousand dollars into capital. It's a very small amount that we're taking out of raising appropriate for capital. We've also are holding other budgets very tight. I don't think we should be increasing the subsidy to Parks and Rec, you do great stuff, there's no, no argument about that. I think it's a fairness issue. And I don't think we should be adding subsidy to a, an enterprise fund when we're not funding other items in the, the budget the way we ought to be, be adding to it. We're, we're putting nothing into the post-retirement fund. As I say, we're putting fifty-six thousand dollars, which is covering two items on the capital improvement list that, that we recommended a month or so ago. There are other items that are going to be recommended, but they're going to be bonded, so it's not going to be coming out of the operating budget. We had recommended that fifty thousand dollars be put into repairs of town-owned property. I don't see anything on the budget on that at this point, there's no number in there for it. One of the things that we looked at when the capital improvements committee went around and, and toured various sites was the deplorable condition of the, the, the building on the common for the, for the elderly in that room. You know, you've got to make some trade-offs, there's a hundred and thirty thousand dollar subsidy going to Parks and Rec now. I don't think anything more should go to it unless we've just got all kinds of money that we can do lots of things. We've got to make choices. And I think that the line ought to get drawn at the subsidy we're giving and we ought to be putting money into whatever, wherever else you could put it. The sixteen thousand dollars, I'd put it into capital, I'd put it into the, the repairs and maintenance item that we, we, that we talked about in the capital improvements committee. It's not, not, not a reflection of the work that you guys are doing, it's just that the economics, I don't think work.
Well, he said, he has a good point, he said the demand is going down, but I've got to tell you, the demand on keeping the property up is never going to go down. You know, you want to turn into a, to stay in a horrible position, we're trying to keep everything in tip-top shape, it's safe for the children in this town, for the, for the town. That's going to be tough or something, you know, I mean, you want, you can't have, we have to have the resources to be able to do it. And we're just getting, the demand is actually getting increasingly tough on us, on us because of that, because of the owners. You know, the demand for the rent is not going to go down, no matter what, we still have to take care of the town property.
Mr. Keller, you want to respond to it?
I think you should do that, but use your retained earnings for it. There was a capital request that came through from Parks and Rec, sixty thousand dollars.
No, that's not on the table.
I know it's not, but it originally came through, it's use sixty thousand retained earnings for improvements.
We haven't put in any requests, no sixty thousand.
No, what that is, is it's a five-year plan and it just keeps moving, for the, yeah. And I told them just the other day that that's not in this year, it's moving, we move it year to year.
But it was.
Well, it was, it was in the plan. All I'm saying is that, if you, if these things are important to you, then use the, the retained earnings to pay for them.
Well, with all due respect, we, we did.
You need to make as an enterprise.
Right, we did cut them from our budget, it was the concern of the board about our cuts to summer personnel, which was children, you know, and so we, we took the concern and we, and we were asked to do diligence on what we would do. So, I mean, they came to us and said, you know, if we could fund it for you, which put the positions back, and we said yes. So we did cut it from our budget, we didn't come and ask first, although.
Do you suggest, Mr. Keller, if we took the sixty thousand dollars and put it in there and then you have any one of these catastrophes that they've talked about that happens, no, I'm just asking, because I don't know the financial part of it. If we ran that, that down to zero and took that money to balance our budget with the only enterprise fund, that then, are we supposed to then, if there's an emergency, come back to finance if they give us?
No, I wasn't suggesting you use it for capital. I was commenting, I was commenting on the fact that it was in the request for capital, that the capital improvements committee looked at.
Right, but I'm saying we have to run it like the, like the enterprise that because we're, due to our success, we had to run it like an enterprise opposed to revolving funds that we did. We're saying, we are like, we look at ourselves like the school. You have to have administrators, the school has administrators. We have to have people in the field, they have to have people in the field. We have to have teachers to take care of our classes, they have teachers to take care of it. We have to still raise money to run these programs. If we chose not to, if we were a little bit of a lazy department and committee, we would just say, you know what, they're all going to be paid just the way they want to. We're going to set policies and procedures, we're going to be home at night and not run the extra things that we run and you won't have what you have in town. If the town wants that, I mean, I think that's fair, if the selectmen would prefer that, then they should say, we don't want to try to help with that extra money. We don't do anything with that money to do anything extra, we do it to run quality programs for the town. No, I'm saying.
I, I agree with that. All I'm saying is that, that if you, if you need to fund that, you've got retained earnings to use to fund it. You've got, you've got sixty.
If there's an emergency, but I'm saying if there's an emergency, we take from it. The tennis courts along, our original quote was sixty-some-odd thousand dollars for one court to fix it. If we ran that down, do we then come, I guess that's a rational dismat expertise from the finance and selectmen. Would you rather we run it down and then every year if there's an emergency, come back and ask the town to say, give us twenty thousand for this and give us sixty thousand for that?
No, not asking you to run it down. I'm asking you to make, make a decision on what, what you need to spend money on.
But that's what happened.
In your budget, and if you find something that's important and you can't afford it, then use your retained earnings to pay for it. Then not come back and ask for more money from the general fund for it.
But we've been cut, we're the only department that has been cut in the last six or seven years. It kept getting cut and cut and cut, that's why we're down to just two salaries. The town used to give us a lot more money. We tried to suck it up and say, we'll step in and we'll run extra programs because we want quality programs. We don't want to revert back to that. We raised, was it over twenty thousand, thirty thousand? We, we've been doing it since the start of the inception of the Ipsa River Park. We, our group alone in L U C raised forty to fifty thousand a year to pay the Hillview back for doing it. We're the only town, only group, only enterprise that has done that. We don't ask the police, fire, E P W, library, any of them to do fundraisers to pay for a basic expense that the town has to pay. We're only an enterprise fund because we were doing, we were very successful and doing very well and the amount of monies we had to spend and what we took in forced us into an enterprise. We would love to do revolving and go back where we were six or seven years ago. But there's only so much money you can continue to put back on, I think like Mr. Tony said. If we put it back on the league, the league is a person, the league is another family that cuts something else out to do it. We're the only department that raises money to balance our budget.
My point is there are other needs in the town that have been considered other than recreation. That's, that's my own, my own point.
And all I'm asking is though, is would the town like to see us cut back on our program, not offer as many services to the town, not take care of our parks the way they do, go every two weeks and mow, and not do, keep things up the way we are? That's, it's an easy, it's an easy answer. When we start to retire some of us and not keep doing this and the new groups that come in, we don't get a lot of people that raise their hand because every one of them says, I see you at the barbecue, I see you here, I see you here, Lynn, you're there every night. Maureen's here every night with Jean, because I closed the building, and, and Marty and his guys are out there. So I mean, there's nothing else you can take from our committee or our department. So the question is, would you prefer, and we're not saying that, you know, you have to keep giving us things, but if you choose not to give it to us and we choose to say, you know what, we're tired, we don't want to keep doing it. There aren't going to be any other members that are going to jump on this board and say, hey, let me take your place. I like to work and I used to thirty hours to balance your budget every week in addition to my real job. Is that what we should do? And should we start preparing for emergencies to happen? Because Marty can give you a list every year of every expense, how many times we replaced the sprinklers, the, the water pumps, the, the fields that were out there, the skate park, we, we're managing the concession stand at the school now. She's leasing the building now, the fields, so many more times now. So she used to have forty permits, now she has four hundred, and it's all to keep doing the, the budget. So every one of them are putting more stress and pressure and hours on them to balance it. And we're the only department that's saying, treat us like the other departments, don't make us keep working like this to, to take care of the town budget. Because seventy-five percent of the fields are used by everybody that wants to walk their dogs, walk their kids, play, play tennis on the things that we can't charge user fees. Unless you want to say, take the parking lots, and there was a time we said, let's charge a two or three dollar fee for the barbecues to pull in and one selectman went berserk on us and said, they shouldn't have to pay to do it. And we're saying, what, and we should have to pay to work an extra forty hours a week to balance the budget? That was a small fee that we did to incur things. So if you want us to say, every parking lot, run by recreation or the schools, we're going to charge you a buck or two or three every time you come in to balance the budget so we don't have to volunteer. Can we do that? Give us some relief somewhere, I mean, they can't just.
And also, we're there for the, we're there right now supporting the schools to this. When the schools' fields are not easily used, they're coming down using Ipsa River Park more. When they needed a place to put the buses because there's no place left at the schools anymore, they're parking them at Ipsa River Park. And we are accommodating and we do everything we can to make it work well for the community. We're truly community-driven department and we work really hard to make the community work in a, in a really user-friendly way, interdepartmental, inter-community, and so the support would just mean a lot to us.
Yeah, it started in two thousand and eight when they cut the recreation director's position and the park maintenance position. And when they cut those two positions, it was a good ninety thousand dollar cut at the time and that just threw us into a frenzy. We went from a fifteen dollar user fee to a forty-five dollar user fee. And with those, paying those salaries, we also have to pay for all the contractual increases, all the health insurance that goes along with it, every stipend, every longevity, every COLA. So that's why we're at that point too, and these are permanent employees, so, that make us roll. So that's, you know, our, our hope is that you can just assist us with whatever you feel you can.
I'm going to go back to you again, what's the bottom line, is it, is it the summer help, is it ninety-one sixty-four?
If, that's our, that's priority number one, the ninety-one sixty-four is our priority number one.
All right, and this gig is the other thing.
Us, the capital is number two. Emergency repairs, definitely, we, you know, that would be number three, but as I had said, we could go, if, if an emergency happens, we do have the option to go to our retained earnings because that is what it is built for, emergencies or undue circumstances. So that's priority one, two, three, just the way they're listed.
So try a balloon, I'll make a motion to increase the recreation budget by ten thousand dollars.
A second.
The motion is second, discussion.
Well, I, I'm just, again, as a, you know, I'm going to tell you, I grew up, I was a latchkey kid. I, I relied on Parks and Rec my whole life as my babysitter. My parents both worked seven days a week, so this is something that's important to me, I think it's. And North Running is not something, I understand that, kids will always find something to do, but I don't think it's a large number. I think, I think we have an obligation to try and to help out when we can. And this isn't about, to me, no disrespect to you, it's not about helping out the department, it's about, it's about the kids and about the, you know.
We, that's what we're all about.
Yeah, no, I know that, and again, this, so if, if I vote in favor of this, it's, it's to put the money back in for the summer help, not, not to try and help you subsidize your, your budget, but I know that'll help.
Right, that's why it's priority number one for us too. I mean, it's to allow the families to come in, make it as user-friendly. Yeah, employ the, employ the kids, that's four positions right there that we can employ.
Mrs. Mullin did a great job explaining the unique, how unique your department is, it really is, and how it does touch across the town. But it does frustrate me sitting here, as I've read through all these budgets over and over and over in the last several weeks, just to try to look at it all. And it does frustrate me when we sit here and we talk about just even say ten thousand dollars for this one department. And you look at, even just take a simplest thing, like we talked about gas, and I know we, but you know what, that's sixteen thousand dollars. And I still think that that's where this money is much better spent on our community than, than putting more fuel. So our, so some of our vehicles can go off to New Hampshire and come back and all this other stuff. You go back and you look at phones, look at the phone expense in this town, if you combined them, entire town, it is incredible. I don't think anybody's ever grasped what we're spending on phones in this town. But we just do it and we never question it. But let me tell you, it adds up for far more than ten thousand dollars. But if we were actually working, like we, we would do our own households and a lot of the stuff in this budget, we wouldn't be seeing the increases in cell phones, we wouldn't be seeing the increases in gas, we would be managing it. And I'm only picking on two things, there's probably ten more in here that we could focus on in him. You know, so you know what, to the finance committee, to the FinCon, the money's, we have the money. We're just spending it in the wrong places. We need to wake up and start looking at where we let these increases continue every year and we never question them because they're small. There are five thousand here, five thousand there, but it's by each department, when you add it all up, it's crazy money. So I'm, I am supporting you, I hope that we can get another vote to get you the money. And we'll find the money, we'll cut it, yeah, we're going to cut the ten thousand somewhere else. But there's plenty places to cut it, so don't feel bad about it.
First of all, the, the fuel stuff, that comes out of the D P W budget, right? You're not budgeting for fuel, right? So that's in addition to the hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred, whatever.
Right, there's no fuel.
Where there's no fuel cost, so we're subsidizing to that extent too. But to Rita's point in relation to the work that's done by not only the, the full-time staff, but the volunteers, for years, it's, it's been the same few people and very few new faces. Going all the way back to when Ipsa River Park was taken and promised by L U C and there's a tremendous amount of crossover between L U C members and recreation members and supporters. We did, you know, we raised forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year to help pay back the, the costs and, and to subsidize the community for the purchase and development of Ipsa River Park. And I, what I do see and what I do fear is people are getting tired, aging in place, but getting tired. And, and the ability to have people step up to the plate and to continue the good work that's been done, I don't see it happening. I mean, I don't see this next generation of people that are preoccupied with, with other priorities in their own lives that don't coincide with what the prioritization used to be fifteen, twenty years ago or more. You know, our parents before us, people's priorities have changed. So the town is going to have to step up and get back into subsidizing these programs. If we're looking to maintain what we have, we're going to have to prioritize and just make a conscious decision as to whether or not these programs that we currently offer are something that we can afford. And we want to continue to afford, and it can't be done with the way we continue to operate. I, I don't see it happening, you know, despite all of your best efforts. And, and I'm as guilty as anybody else by sitting back and saying thank you very much and applauding you at town meeting and applauding you at every opportunity that I get, but I say, I don't know how you do it and why you do it and how you've been able to sustain it for all these years. So, you know, we're going to have to make a determination. Now, is it a question of do we spend your retained earnings down to zero to finally force us into a position, you know, force us into a position to do that? Or do we start to acclimate ourselves to the point where, okay, we're going to have to continue to subsidize? to acclimate ourselves to the point where, okay, we're going to have to continue to subsidize to a little greater level than we are right now? And there's no doubt in the last five years, uh, this department has taken the most significant hit than any other department in a general government, from a percentage standpoint and a dollars and cents standpoint, as far as hits. But those were conscious decisions we made too, because when we had to prioritize our budget, this was one of the first things to get cut. And fortunately, you had some retained earnings, you increased the fees, you were able to generate some income to maintain the programs and actually enhance them. So, um, yeah, we're going to have to find the ten thousand dollars somewhere to get you through this year, but I think we have some real discussions that have to take place, you know, in the upcoming fiscal year, budget deliberations as to really where are we going and what are we going to be doing, and what can we afford to do. And it may be a decision that's going to disappoint, you know, the people who are sitting there today, but, uh, you know, I think right now, I think it's important to, if we're going to employ four more kids for the summer, I think that's a good thing. Uh, if we're going to be able to maintain the, the program that we have that people have become accustomed to, I think that's a good thing. And the cost of ten thousand dollars, it's ten thousand dollars that we have to find somewhere. Uh, and we don't know where yet. Uh, so someone's going to have to work their magic, but I'm, I'm going to support the motion, uh, but with a caveat, I think next year we're talking about coming back and supplementing it even more, or making a conscious decision to cut back on, on our programming, what we're offering, although we have services. Thank you.
I, I made the motion primarily because of my concern about summer programs being shrunk down. Clearly, the benefit of those programs in terms of keeping youths off the street, getting into, doing malicious damage to the properties and things like that, I, I think that the payback far exceeds the expense.
I agree.
And, you know, it'll be a toll on public safety, or it'll be a toll on repairs to the parks, or whatever, and, uh, you know, that's why I proposed it, uh, and, uh, you know, I was on the finance committee for a number of years, and, uh, we had a general rule of thumb about balancing the budget. If we got the budget balanced to within fifty thousand dollars, it was balanced because of the basic estimates of revenue, as Greg said, conservative. And I, I agree with Mike, I think that, you know, if we went and scrutinized all the budgets, we could find ten thousand dollars. Or if we look carefully at our available funds or revenue, we can find ten thousand dollars. It's not a lot to ask, and I think it's a very, very investment.
I agree with a lot of what's been said up here this evening. The work you do is just incredible, without a doubt. In terms of ten thousand dollars, in my eyes, it's a very, it's a small number. My concern is your structure as an enterprise, and I guess I need to hear more from our finance director in terms of, I have some explaining to do to DOR. What does that mean? And as Mr. O'Leary said, you know, next year we may be looking to subsidize this even more than this additional ten thousand, as it looks like this motion's going to prevail. What, what does that mean going down the road? Because you are an enterprise fund, and enterprise funds have to run a certain way, to my knowledge. So, uh, I would appreciate Liz, your input in helping me reach a decision here, because I have some concern about the structure.
It is a concerning factor, and I did speak with our, um, rep at, at DOR last week, and her, her big boss is concerned about it and brought it up, um, when we were setting the tax rate this past November. Uh, and they're looking for us to have some type of structure, some type of plan in place on how we are going to start, um, weaning off of such a high subsidy. From what they see, and I know, you know, we are a, a smaller community, but from what they see, our subsidy is a great percentage of, of the budget compared to the other communities that my rep, um, takes care of. So, you know, and a point was made that with, it's going to grow, because cost of living, um, other contractual obligations, and we need to somehow figure out how we can make it work, how we can start bringing it down every year, as well as them still meeting their budget.
But-
And I know, I know that it seems impossible, but it's impossible for us to balance the budget too. Uh, you guys, ten thousand dollars may sound like no big deal, but we've struggled to even make it to this point, and-
Yeah, but, but that, to me, I agree with Mr. Messeri and Mr. Prisco, I think a better job can be done in terms of finding money here, efficiencies and so forth. I don't think the, the budget has been looked at that closely, so that's my personal opinion. However, I still don't understand, what is the ramification through DOR if we either continue to subsidize just the two salaries and those grow, but also adding to it? I, I guess I-
They can delay setting the tax rate. They cannot, they can refuse to set the tax rate.
Mr. O'Leary.
I don't see this as being an ongoing enterprise, so take it out.
Right.
You have to have it for three years, the fiscal year fourteen, uh, that is our, that will be our third year.
Take it out, because I don't see us sustaining the level of services if this is what we choose to do.
There's-
You know, going forward as an enterprise and meeting the guidelines that have been established by DOR-
We're going to have some meetings on that and find out if something has to be done in regard to splitting the departments. I'm not sure.
Split it, but, you know, to me, you know-
Parks Department, Recreation-
No, I know, I know, Parks and Rec, thank you.
So, we can have two revolving accounts instead of-
Because you can't be-
Two separate revolving accounts, okay.
Yes.
Park and Sheenaxon. But to me, that's a, you know, if we can't meet the guidelines as established under the definition of what an enterprise is, under the DOAs, policies and procedures and whatever it is, statutes of government and all of that, then you know what, we can't meet it.
We can't meet it. We were shoved into it because we can't meet the one percent of the municipal prior year levy. We're just too high. Our expenses are too high due to the personnel that was cut. When that personnel was cut, that just dropped, made us, threw us right over, so-
But to me, we can continue to operate, and I think the subsidies are going to have to be increased if we're going to maintain the level of services that we currently enjoy going forward, and, but we won't meet the definition, or comparatively speaking, with other communities, we're not going to fall in the median range, so we're not looked at and scrutinized. If that's the case, take it out and let's make it work.
Most smaller communities are revolving accounts.
Right, so that's what we use-
Like Wilmington, they pay for their recreation director and-
But that's what, that's what we used to do, that's what we used to do too.
Right.
And again, with the revolving fund, we can still use those funds that are in, we call retained earnings, a revolving fund-
Right.
To subsidize and pay for most of the programming that we have-
Right.
And whatever we need to supplement and subsidize, we do it through the general operating budget, which is exactly what we're doing now anyway.
Right, we know it needs to be revisited, we, we know this isn't working the way it is.
But we did speak to the department of revenue at the time when this happened, and asked them, you know, that's our only option, and they said yes, and the thing was the budget, budgeted subsidy, it's in here, it's in their rules, it says, yes, you can do it. They may not like it, but they set up, again, it's like the school, they set up the rules to tell you what the rules are-
But if we're going to be overly scrutinized-
Go back to revolving-
Go back to the revolving fund, do what we've been doing, and it's still working.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be-
It's just an accounting-
Researched and revisited and-
And you say, well, we have one more year that we have to do this?
This is the last year, fourteen.
FY fourteen.
This is the, is four, the third year.
Not, not FY thirteen.
Right.
And if I could too, there is, there is some fact that when we did do Ipsut River Park, it was two volunteer committees, Parks and Rec and LUC, that wrote a million dollar grant. The volunteers that wrote-
There's, there's no, there's no-
And we, we have extra things because we got aggressive to do good things for the town, and again, we're just asking for what's the-
You know, I, basically, a couple things. One is, it seems like we got into this enterprise as a result of some rules. It wasn't like-
Right, wasn't like it wanted to be.
It was a town's intent to do it.
Right.
And, and I, and I think recognizing that we have this problem, going to the DOR, uh, you know, I think we can build a case and even put a program together as to how we're going to get out of it, so that we can get around the DOR issue. The other thing is that, uh, I think that the, you know, the, the overall, uh, concept of, uh, recreation and where it fits into a budget process, and the fact that the program has grown, which has created the problem, I agree, needs to be looked at again from, from, you know, how we budget it, uh, you know, do we want to do the sharing that, because they're doing some things that would have normally fallen into other town responsibilities, DPW, whatever, in terms of, well, Parks and Recreation is part of DPW, and all of a sudden now it's a, an independent, uh, enterprise. And, uh, so, I, you know, I think that, uh, we, we need to go forward with, as we've been discussing here, and coming to the conclusion, Steve's made the point too, of coming up with a better way of running the overall program, because I think the bottom line is that there's a significant benefit from the programs that are made available. There, there's a return on that investment that we, it's kind of hard to measure until you shed it off.
I don't, I don't disagree. However, I will say this, uh, I do have concerns about DOR's posture. I think you all know, I respect everything that you do, but because you're set up as an enterprise, and I think, from government go, no in favor of this ten thousand, although you deserve it, uh, and I want to see those summer programs, uh, to be flourishing with children. I think it's going to pass. My, my, my point of view is that your enterprise fund should be run that way. Uh, I also think we have to consider taking you out of that, that mess that you didn't want to be in, uh, going forward in next year. So, just to let you know where I'm coming from, uh, but you're going to get it, it's going to be a four to one vote here, but I just want to state the reason why I'm not voting in favor of it, because you are an enterprise fund, and you do have those retained earnings. But I appreciate all your efforts.
The subsidy would be, i- if you did grant the ten thousand, would be about fifteen thousand dollars less than we're asking for thirteen, fiscal year thirteen, we received about one fifty-one, and this would be one forty. It's less.
If I may, if everybody remembers, that has to do with the June town meeting-
Right.
And he's not going into it, so it wasn't all for FY thirteen.
Right. I know, no, I agree, I'm just saying, in the, in the view of how the accounting goes through, they'll say the subsidy was one fifty-one, and this is one forty.
So, we can pitch to DOR that we were actually reducing, right? Okay.
Well, they-
Just throwing it out there.
You know, that, in their eyes, when they saw that, that's when they started complaining, and I had to explain, and then they said, "You need to implement a plan," so.
Ten thousand dollars less.
Again, just explain, oh, they're not willing to work with us, or they can't work with us, then we'll try and look for another solution.
And they're not trying to work against us, it's just their, their rules and regulations. This is just, this is an example illustrating.
Right.
It's not telling you, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand is what-
Oh, no, no, no.
That's okay.
No.
So, I just want everybody to be clear, this is just an illustration of how, how it works. Um, but they don't want to see the percentage of the budget being subsidized, a high percentage of the budget being subsidized. That's, that's their aim for them.
And, and just, just as a clarification, and if we say to them, "Well, we can't meet your guidelines," what's their solution? Take it out of the enterprise?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what we're going, going to do, going forward.
That's right.
All right, we're ready?
All right.
Okay.
I've been in this room since five, I need to go take a break, I'm sorry.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, four to one.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
If you wish, yeah, we're, we're meeting Thursday night.
To the town administrator, would you be able to get back to us next week on what has to give?
Absolutely.
And just one, uh, other comment, Sean made some comment about, uh, not doing capital draw, I don't think it was in, on the budget, it wasn't in, did you?
Oh, no.
I think it was a case of us reviewing the budget and everything else, so please don't take it that way.
I think you want to take a closer look at it.
No, and it's not that we have anything against Parks and Rec, it just has to do with balancing the budget and also the, the effect of DOR. I mean, you, I'm the one that has to deal with it.
No, no, that was my issue. I mean, it's their structure that puts them into this predicament, so we know what the solution is, we're going to follow.
But we have, we also-
General plan backs up all the plans, and that message gets raised on the agenda.
Take a five-minute recess? So, I see everyone's disappearing.
I'm just perfectly comfortable. It was, it was warm for a while, it cooled for a while. I'm not shivering, the worst thing was the winter time, my feet are ice cold, and it stays on, it doesn't just go away.
Yeah, it's the hottest thing that's ever happened. Okay.
What's this, I think, with the DOR, enterprise fund, enterprise fund has a set up, completely-
He's alive. His mic's alive.
Yeah, so revolving funds, they cut the recreation director, paid for the recreation director in Chris Evans' position, they would pay for it by the time, so that was about ninety thousand dollars at the time, and they said, "We'll be there." So, like, I'm, I'm, I was, and I said, "Two, you pay for all of it."
Thank you, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't stay any longer.
So, you're actually losing people.
So, the DOR says that if you call it an enterprise fund, you can't get subsidies from the town, because you have law, or-
Enterprise, it is perfect form to sell.
Yeah, okay, raw business.
Wait till you see my notebook. Can we just get to it?
But you're embedded in the town, though.
Can I call them in?
Steve, Joe, they're there.
Two into the laser, she could walk all the way down here.
Yeah, it's more like-
Well, I'll take a right, that's my pick.
You have to hit that one time.
I think the one that was, they actually, so, so, that's definitely-
The person that was, now, uh-
Right, right, it's, they didn't make that.
She retired.
Right, that's the rules, sure.
The owner came.
Will we be back to work? Is that how you do this?
John, I'd like to think about that.
We're on the same page.
You finished this page, right?
Yes.
Good.
Would you let me, like me to continue?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go through this one pretty quickly, it just illustrates some-
It's only five point two million.
Issues in health insurance. The, uh, the budget request for health insurance is five million, one seventy-three, oh forty-one. The current year budget is five point two million dollars. This is the third year that we've been with the Harvard Pilgrim HMO and PPO plan, and I think during that time we've seen some really good, uh, rate changes coming to the town. As I mentioned earlier, the budget is based upon a three percent increase, and you look at that and you say, "How can a three percent increase on five point two million dollars equate to a decrease?" The budget request for health insurance is $5,173,041. The current year budget is $5.2 million. This is the third year that we've been with the Harvard Pilgrim HMO and PPO plan, and I think during that time, we've seen some really good rate changes coming to the town. As I mentioned earlier, the budget is based upon a 3% increase, and you look at that and you say, "How can a 3% increase on $5.2 million equate to a decrease in the budget?" And the math is fairly simple to explain. What we do is we look at what our run rate and what our enrollment is for this current fiscal year. We then carry that forward into the next fiscal year, and we base our fiscal 2014 numbers off of what we anticipate spending for this fiscal year. So, if you look at the $5.2 million number, we anticipate that we will run a surplus in the health insurance budget for fiscal year 2013. So, therefore, even with a 3% increase in rates, we anticipate we'll be spending less for health insurance next year than we're spending for this year. And I think that's pretty remarkable when you consider the fact that the average municipal increase, according to the MIA program, is about 6.4%. And for those members who were present at that Mass Municipal Meeting back in January, that literally stated in terms of the benchmark for what cities and towns can expect for an increase in health insurance rates for fiscal '14. So, our costs are good. We have an ongoing dialogue with our employees through the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee. It's something that we do, which is necessary to comply with the General Law, Chapter 32B. The budget this year does not propose any changes in the health insurance plan. We're happy to see our costs go down, and we're happy to see our costs go down in view of what I had mentioned earlier, increases in the range of 12% to 16% in years gone by. Questions about this page?
It's not so much a question, a comment, that since, you know, the increase in health insurance on an annual basis is based on our group experiences, do we have any plans for working with our employees to try to maintain good health and keep that number down?
Most definitely. There are different wellness programs that are involved, and we try to keep our employees involved in those issues. Our rate is based upon our own experience, but we're a very small group op, so what they do is they also include us in a blended pool. So, our rate is also based upon similar types of municipalities, because if we were to have a significant spike in claims, our rate could go up 15% to 20%, and we don't want that to happen. So, yes. Any questions about this page? So, in summary, these are the department budgets that are being recommended this evening. The fixed class budget is $17,630,337, and we've accommodated and included all of the revenues to be able to fully fund that. In terms of our fixed class, we look at our debt services being the number-one priority. We also mentioned that we have health insurance, we have state charges and assessments, we have our regional school assessment. We just recently received good information from our regional school assessment that their cost is down about $22,000. We've incorporated that into our revenue plan, and it helped us balance our revenue plan that you have here this evening. The general government budget is $13,272,890, and I did a quick calculation earlier this evening that about 71% of that number is salaries. So, of that total, about $9.3 million of our total general government budget is salaries. And I think people always talk about schools being heavily salary-weighted, but we're also heavily salary-rated. And then, when you look at what's left, our expenses, there's about $1 million for our solid waste contracts. So, you realize that when we look at expenses that we can make cuts on, we're somewhat limited as our other departments. And if we wish to maintain savings going forward, we need to increase salaries, which are fair in terms of our labor agreements. When people retire and move on to other employment, what we do is we true-up their salary budget. Case in point is in the treasurer's office, where senior employee left, a new junior employee will be hired. We're able to achieve a $10,000 cost savings as a result of doing that. So, we're diligent, and we've seen significant turnover in our public safety departments, specifically in the police department. As a result of those savings, we'd have been able to hire some new people on board and embark upon some additional initiatives. But that's, again, because of the fact that we simply go back and we true-up the budget based upon what we anticipate our actual costs will be in the future years. The school budget was the number that had been recommended by the school committee, so this is their number that they finally, as a result of numerous discussions through the financial planning team, had settled on, which was the $25,624,489. The total budget is $56,527,806, and the total increase from the current fiscal year is 1.4%. Thank you.
Questions?
That was just the revenue that we went over, right? Are we going to go over any of the expenses?
We have a page that shows each department expense itemized. If you look at it, it's.
That's in our packet?
Yes, it is.
Or is it something new?
It's.
Before the revenue plan in your packet? If you look at the original one, it's page 26 in the electronic version.
Okay. Yep.
FY 2014 appropriation projection.
That's in our meeting packet? Do you want me to?
You have a question?
Well, yeah, we're obviously looking at the spreadsheet, right? I just want to make sure I'm on the correct page. Is this the right one? Okay. You know, you've heard my objection. I don't want to get into a long debate about it, but I think the $16,000 that's on this slide needs to come off. I also think that we need to take a heavy look at our cell phone and expense across town. I think it needs to be looked at before we approve this budget. I think it's gotten a little bit out of control. I think the departments need to work better, be more efficient with those as well. I actually sent the DPW director an email a few weeks ago. I'm just really confused about the DPW overtime budget. He based his budget on just doing 10% of union wages. That's how we come up with a budget. I'm just concerned that nobody on the board has really questioned that. Is that really a typical way we actually put together an overtime budget? A budget of that size, by the way, it's concerning to me, and I think it's worthy of us a discussion tonight. I don't think we should be proving that that size of an overtime budget, just using a, you know, formula of 10% of union wages. It's just, to me, doesn't seem one professional way to do it, nor is it fiduciary responsible to do it that way. Mr. Fordy, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I hate to do it, and I probably should have talked to you in advance, so I'm going to apologize in advance. But you're a DPW director. Could you just give me a little bit of mentoring on this? Is this a typical way of setting a budget?
I can't speak for how other people, other departments do it. I mean, I'd be happy to show how I've done it, but I'm not going to. Typically, what we do is we look at our current year that we're in before we make a request, and see if there's anything in there that was out of the ordinary that was in there. And if not, then, you know, we at least try to level fund it. If not, if there's something that was out of the ordinary, then we'll take that into consideration. I mean, Greg made a good point in the fact that in the last couple of years, we have had instances where, you know, events that haven't been, you know, going on in the last 10 to 15 years, but more so the last two or three years. But that's taken into consideration when you do make your request for overtime. But again, you know, that's just one way of looking at it. It doesn't mean that's a right or wrong way.
I guess, I'm sorry, I missed the answer to his question there. How do you figure what you need for overtime?
So, we look at what our expenditures were, or what we anticipate they're going to be in the current year, look at anything that's out of the ordinary that.
Okay, but if you get the out of the ordinary, then is it a percentage of the budget based upon, we know that at this time of year, we have our guys working on special projects, and they put in, you know, work till late o'clock at night, you know, six days a week.
No, because most of my overtime, honestly, most of my overtime is based on, other than Saturdays, we bring people just on Saturdays. Other than that, it's just emergency overtime. We don't have any scheduled overtime throughout the year, other than a couple of guys working on Saturdays for some cleanup.
Topography's a little different there than.
Correct.
Than here, too. We have a lot more to maintain as far as open space.
Open space.
Open space and maybe projects that way. Because I know over the past, I mean, what's been presented to us is, you know, a certain number of hours based upon weather conditions, we factor in certain projects that are going to be done on overtime rather than contracting out because it's cheaper.
Well, I.
It's been proven to be cheaper in the past here.
Okay. I haven't seen that, but.
You know, it's been proven to be cheaper. Basically, we have the equipment, we have the manpower, and, you know, there's no more, you know.
I.
But anyway, that's how it's been budgeted in the past, is to take basically the season and then move forward. And again, snowstorms certainly come into play as far as.
Yeah, it's a separate budget.
And then, when you have some other events, you know, such as the October storm and, you know.
I will agree, there are instances where doing it in-house with overtime is more cost-effective, but I would like to, I would say, I look at each individual task on an individual basis and make a decision. I don't budget ahead of time, saying that I have these projects to do, and I'm automatically going to give it to my guys in-house on overtime.
Generally, we have a long enough laundry list of projects that need to be addressed and could be done, and if a budget can afford it, we can have done.
Again, I'm not trying to cause trouble here, just when you read a report that just says you're basing it on 10% of union wages, I don't think our other departments that have overtime just use a random formula like that. And, you know, we're looking for every dollar here to get through this budget. And, you know, I hear the nervousness and the urgency in Liz's voice, it makes me concerned because she's obviously very concerned what the level of spending we're at here. So, we have to go back and look, when these things don't make sense in these budgets, because this is all I have the work off of, I have to base my decisions. So, I've already given you two places where I think we can easily cut, no questions asked. This is a particular one, I'm just asking if maybe the DPW director would mind coming up, and just explaining the rationale behind using a formula of this kind. And just help me get through it, just educate me to get, to understand your overtime budget, because right now, I'm a little confused. Excuse me.
Mr. Kavala, before you begin, Mr. Misery?
Well, what I was going to suggest is, since the DPW has, through the years, run certain weekend projects, it's a resource issue. You're going to have more employees in the DPW, or some of these projects that we would farm out, that DPW can do for less money for certain kinds of things, you know, on weekends and overtime. So, perhaps, and so the overtime budget covers two things, plant overtime and emergency overtime. And perhaps, going forward, if the DPW director could provide the overtime budget broken into two pieces, that are plant projects that are recurring each year, and the amount of money that's going to be spent out of the overtime budget to cover that, and then the amount of money that's going to be held for emergencies, perhaps Mr. Frisco's concerns could be alleviated. That being said, if.
Mike, we don't budget 10% blindly.
Historically, it's been about 10%. I have implemented a work order system three years ago, so I have tracking of every work order we've completed over the last three years. The overtime is actually funded out of seven different funding sources. This is the spreadsheet I gave you at the budget hearing. So, for example, snow and ice, we budget zero for overtime for snow and ice. We just budget a fixed amount, we always have that. So, for that kind of weather, zero. Water department has their own overtime, it's part of the enterprise fund. Recycling, the city of the town maintains a recycling center at the garage. It's staffed one person every Saturday for the entire season. That comes out of the sanitation budget. We do a variety of work for other departments, schools. We maintain the facilities, the grounds, the vehicles. We do work for the Hillview. We do work for Gina Nicosia's group, things like that, based on the discussion. I should start charging them back for fuel, apparently, because some of the fuel goes to doing those construction projects. Special projects, some of the town road projects and other special projects are funded outside of the DPW budget. So, there's a bunch of different funding sources in those. Capital projects done typically after hours in lieu of using contractor are funded outside of the DPW budget. So, the original question, we don't just budget 10% based on the amount of work we do in various categories, drainage, flooding, highway, just responding to emergencies, or typical schedule thing. People die, we have to bury them on the weekends. That's why we have $10,000 to $15,000 in the cemetery department for scheduled overtime. And it's things like that. I can give you the numbers, and I have work orders to back all these things up. But it's not a, for example, the fire and police, they maintain 24/7 staffing. Someone's on vacation, they have to backfill. It's kind of easy for them to predict what you want. I don't control the weather, and the construction projects are typically done out of an alternate funding source. So, what's in the DPW budget is just responding to emergencies and basic services for the community.
The reason for my questioning is, in your original budget submission to us, and we sat here on that Saturday and went through it, you didn't have anything in there on overtime, and it came later on. We've actually never talked about DPW overtime in this whole process, just so you know, okay? And a little less than a month ago, we received a letter from you, and this is all I'm going based on, is a letter that says to Mr. Delaney that the DPW budgets approximately 10% of union wages to fund overtime. So, you know, that's all I really had to work with, and then, you know, trying to piece that together. I would think that we'd have a little more plan, very similar to what Mr. Misery was leading to. And even Mr. O'Leary, what he was explaining, actually, you know, if we saw, I would assume we would see an overtime budget that described the types of things that those particular selectmen had brought up. I didn't see that, and we've never had the discussion, so again.
I did provide it to you.
I'd love to see it.
I gave it to you.
I'd love to see if we don't have it.
Mike, I gave it at the budget hearing. This is all the categories. You gave it the details of the categories.
I remember getting that at the budget hearing, because we didn't get the, we didn't see any overtime at the budget hearing. It wasn't included.
It was handed out the day of the Saturday budget hearing. It wasn't available.
There was several different documents that we handed out.
But put that aside, okay? To me, it's like you create your budget based on, you get your 10% of your union wages, and then you pigeonhole in it. That's the way it looked to me.
No, it's not like that.
Okay.
Well, we have historical workload, and it's based on historical workload for emergencies and schedule things like, for example, burials that need to be done after hours.
And just going based on the letter you wrote, so.
And we budget approximately 10%. It didn't mean we take 10% and find the work for it. I'm sorry if that's, that was misunderstood.
That's the way it read to me, and.
Well, I apologize for the not being clear. But there is, there's a reason for it. We don't just generate money to pay people. There are specific things we do.
I would love to see if that spreadsheet could.
Shows a little different, you do a lot more contract ops than I do. You water and wastewater contracted out, you highway?
Yeah.
No.
You sanitation, things like that.
Sanitation.
Yeah, I see. So, we do more in-house, and you can go both ways.
Sanitation's contracted out here also.
Depending on the crews you have, some crews are very good at doing things, and some crews aren't. My prior job is, we had people from Portugal, excellent concretes. We did all our concrete work in-house. And here, for when you redo a street, for example, you have to move the castings, the metal things in the street. There are contractors that'll come and do it, and they whip through it very fast, and it falls apart in five years. Whereas, I am very confident the work the crews do now are a better deal for the community in what I call a lifecycle cost. There's a cost to do it, and a cost to redo it when it goes bad. The stuff I've seen, the quality work they do will require less redoing it prematurely, so it's a better deal for the community. If it wasn't so, I wouldn't do it. The workmanship of these guys is phenomenal, some of the work I've seen. So, I think it's good quality to the community. Frankly, it's cheaper by the hour, it's cheaper by the equipment used, it's cheaper by the project. If it isn't, we don't do it. I contract it out. For example, to complete Main Street sidewalks, due to the cumbersomeness. For example, to complete Main Street sidewalks, due to the cumbersomeness of working out there, we're looking at the contract as a finisher.
Mr. Calabai, I'm sorry, but the only thing I have from you is, it shows your 2008, 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13. I don't have anything on 14, I'm sorry.
It was a hard copy, it was not electronic.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes of the, the board members who don't have that sheet, just to recap again, the amount of overtime requested in the 14 budget is 86,949. Road and Street is 56,169. Machinery maintenance is 18,158. And cemetery is 12,625. I just also went back and looked at the sheet that Dick did hand out and he indicates we did an average of his five-year emergency overtime only and it comes out to about $150,000 a year, if you've run that, and that includes snow and ice. So the majority of that cost is related to snow and ice, but it also includes flooding, highway, tree work and water. And again, it comes out to about $150,000 a year.
So each week when we get the payroll, do you actually have a summary of all those pulled together, tracking?
I would be able to run a report in MUNIS. I don't have a, I don't have his database. I would only have it, what gets paid out.
My database has by name, when you see the backup sheet, that doesn't interface with MUNIS. But that's what I use to sort to get this data.
Can we get a-
And it's plus or minus.
Can we get a year-to-date then? A year-to-date on, on those sheets, a year-to-date total?
On my system or Liz's system?
Yes, I don't want it from her.
Sure. Be aware that we do the work and then depending on the funding source, we don't every day charge it back where it's supposed to go. So we usually wait. Now we're doing it more frequently, we used to do it every six months and now we're doing it monthly, every other month. They charge where it is. So depending on when you pull it, like the last time I looked, we're how far through the fiscal year?
We only have two months left.
So we're like, oh, 70% done, 75% done? And DPW overtime was 40%? So it was way lower than the-
It may be helpful to have the actuals expended as well from my system because it shows what we've, you know, paid out and what we've reclassed.
Well, based on what Mr. Vali Conas just read to me, I'd like to see a, an out, you know, a year-to-date that matches up to what you are talking about for 2014, so I have some kind of a comparison.
We'll give you both.
That would be helpful. That's all I have on the expense, I, that's it.
Anyone else? Calabai, thank you. Anybody else on expense side?
Are we not going to have any discussion about the other two or?
Refresh my memory.
Like fuel, we have to make a decision, I don't know, do we have to make the decision next meeting or do we have to make it this meeting?
All right, both next.
And any discussion about, I'd like to hear from the other board members how you feel about, if you read through all these budgets, you see consistently, even over the last several years now, cell phones and our phone expense continues to rise at a significant rate. I think we have more users, more new phones being added to plans and we have so many departments on different plans, some on, you know, one server versus another. And to me, it just seems that there's a huge area where we can make some efficiency changes and try to get, you know, some benefit by collectively getting everybody on one plan. I know it certainly has helped me in my household and I know from the, they have better plans for actually businesses, so every business I have, I've done a business plan, it's significantly cheaper doing it that way.
Well, actually, most, most carriers have a municipal plan also.
Oh, they don't?
They have a business plan too, so you may want to look at that. But we've consolidated, you know, bringing, where I work, bringing in four departments and we've saved several hundred dollars a month, so it's, it's not a bad idea. It's, it's an idea that has been talked about quite a bit and just doesn't seem to go anywhere. Don't know quite why, but.
Can I interject? We did an analysis of cellphone usage a couple of years ago before Selectman Prisco was on the board and at that time, the cost was approximately $20,000 was the total cost for cellphones. So it was at that time determined that we would not achieve a substantial cost savings by going and consolidating all of our carriers. We certainly would be happy for the 2014 year to go and look at that again, but we don't spend tens of thousands of dollars for cellphones. I mean, the cost is closer to $20,000 than it is to $50,000 or $100,000. There are not that many cellphones that are there, that exist throughout the organization, but we do keep a record and we keep an accounting and Selectman Prisco is right to request that we go back and look at it in terms of being more efficient, we will do that.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we also paying some employees a personal cellphone or that cellphone, it's not a town cellphone, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get your question.
If an employee has a personal cellphone, they use that for work purposes, are we not reimbursing that?
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
If you're reading some of the budget here, that's, they're in there.
I feel it's an area that should be looked at. Mr. Masari?
Well, it seems to me that, you know, it's, it's time to go back and find out what we're spending on cellphones and that would include contracted cellphones and reimbursements and come up with a total and, you know, then we can measure whether or not it's worth spending any effort to consolidate or not. It seems to me that most businesses where there's a lot of cellphone use, contract to a carrier, and on occasion, they make changes. I'm very familiar with a couple, you know, they go a couple of years, next thing you know, they've changed the carrier altogether because they got a better deal. So it's competitive out there and I think that Mike is right in terms of putting some effort into this coming year as to, you know, maybe too late with this current budget process, but to put that on the list of things to take a look at and make a determination of whether, and a mid-year change to save some money, you know, what, what we budget is one thing and if we can save money by not spending within the budget, that's another thing and that, you know, should be, come back to looking for efficiencies. Same thing with the, same thing with the budget on the fuel, at this point, I think the, the amount of money that's in there is, I would go with it because I, you know, I don't think you can predict fuel up or down, but I think there ought to be a goal to look at the gallonage that we're using and see what can be done about reducing fuel consumption. I think that's a reasonable thing to ask the administration, but in terms of saying whether it should be $10,000 more or less at this point, I don't think it really matters because no one can predict the actual cost. What we can do is focus on the actual consumption.
I have no problem taking a look at the cellphone usage, sure. Again, I think that's fine. But again, if there's a, the savings to be realized, realize it in the upcoming fiscal year and turn some money back in. You know, as far as the fuel, I'm all set with the fuel right now and as far as, you know, encouraging employees to conserve, that should be done anyway, but as far as the number that's in the budget, I see go with it.
Does anybody else want to move forward? Mr. Vali Conas?
I have nothing further to, other than warrant articles and capital.
We'll add a five, discussing vote recommendations at June town meeting, warrant articles and capital improvement. Mr. Delaney?
They have capital, and they should stick around for that.
We don't need them to stay.
Except that they have a capital request, I would ask that they stay.
You don't have a capital request? You have to stay if you have a capital question. You need to go.
Sean, was there anything added for capital in the supplement? I haven't had a chance to look at it.
The supplement?
Or Bob, anybody know?
Reece threw it, I don't think so, on capitals.
It's town building repairs.
Oh, there was? The supplement?
Article 21, town building repairs, break down.
Yeah, we discussed that.
And then there's the road, specific road projects.
Roads and sidewalks.
Roads and sidewalks. That's the supplement.
I might turn on the other half of the lights.
Yeah, I would like to, I'm over here, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this, I'm wondering why I'm having a hard time reading.
Chief, would you mind?
Would you mind?
She took away my controller. Light warm in here.
It's warming, yeah.
Where'd my controller go?
I don't know. I think they hung it back up behind the door.
The supplement just says the town building, 21 town building things and then the road projects and the sidewalk. That's what's in the supplement.
Thank you.
Vali Conas, ready?
Board members, it might be helpful if you refer to the capital ranking sheet because I'd really like to go through capital for the department heads who are here and while the night is still fairly young.
Yeah, so who?
Certainly not me.
46 and 47.
Yes, bright yellow.
Yes. I just wanted to say, yeah.
Everyone signed it?
Yes. I think, believe so.
Thank you. The, the proposed CIP items are shown here as recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. They're in the same rank order that the committee presented them to the board of Selectman a month ago. And what I've done is I've met with the finance department and we've gone through and determined what we have for available sources of funds to, to fund these items. And there are items that are recommended for funding are shown in yellow and they are the IT computer equipment rate replacement program at $35,000 and it would be funded through raise and appropriate. It's part of the funding scheme that was put up on the board a little while ago. And then the second item that would be funded through raise and appropriate is item number three, which is the police department building interview and interrogation system at $21,000. Both of those items rank highly in the proposals from the CIPC and we do have available funds in the existing financing plan to be able to pay for those through raise and appropriate. The other items that are included here are items that we would be funding through issuance of debt or through bonding and they would be the town road program. And the town road program was predicated on the amount that would originally budgeted for chapter 90 funds for this year, which is just under $500,000. We know that the governor's budget has more money in it for chapter 90. Whether that happens or not, we do not know, but if it does happen, certainly we don't need to have $300,000 in local road monies to supplement that amount of money. The other item that's shown here is the utility rack truck for the school department, which rated as their highest priority. So this was their priority at a cost of $61,000. And then if we skip down to item number 10, the school department asbestos abatement project for $50,000, which was, as I can recall, the removal of some asbestos floor tiles in one of the school facilities, which we would bond for. The other two items that are shown here in terms of recommending funding is the draft environmental impact report for wastewater, of which we would utilize 236,915 available funds from the Berry project and borrow the remainder and then borrow for replacement of truck 31 in the cemetery department for $58,000. The other items that are shown here are on the deferral list or the not funding list. We do not have money to be able to do all of those things. Most of them are available funds. There is one item that is shown here as bonding, which is item number nine, the replacement of the highway sidewalk pile, we've taken that off the list because it is being repaired through insurance proceeds, so we can at least get that item through another year and it does not need to appear on the list before you this evening. On page two, the items that are shown for the enterprise funds, we had, had a conversation with the Hillview Commission and they are proposing $80,000 in capital improvements, of which they wish to bond all of them. Originally, we had a conversation about whether they would be taken from retained earnings, but the committee has come back and indicated that they wish to bond. The recreation centers, you heard this evening, is not on the list. And then the final three items are all water department enterprise related, which is the draft environmental impact report for the water at 205,000, which we would bond and pay for through the water enterprise fund. And then the engineering design on the MWRE interconnection would also be bonded, the water system upgrades, and you have some detail in terms of what those are, would be through available funds. Just wanted to note that the water department, if you look at their long-term debt schedule, is retiring just under $100,000 in debt going into fiscal year 2014, so I'm comfortable that the enterprise fund with the available rate, the existing rate structure that you approved can support these items through bonding them.
Boyd, Mr. Ford?
Greg, how did we, how did you determine which project you were going to recommend? Is it based on available funding or what you felt was, what you felt was most important?
No, it was, it was based upon the priority that came to us from the CIPC and then what we did was we looked at what was available for monies. So we initially, remember, we had $56,000 programmed in the budget for raise and appropriate. If we had had an additional 25,000 available in raise and appropriate, then what we would simply do was move down to fund the hood, school energy system upgrades at $25,000 and so forth, which was really just a matter of money.
I don't see it that way because replacing the truck number 31 is number 13 on the list.
Yes, because it's being funded through bonding versus through raise and appropriate.
Are you saying that other things that were higher up on the list can't be purchased through bonding?
The recommendation would be to bond those items that we think are going to last long-term.
Sidewalks are going to last long-term?
Of course, of course.
So if sidewalks were higher on the list at $50,000 and the truck was lower on the list for $58,000 and they could both be bonded, why was the truck taken?
These were the funding recommendations that were set forth by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and I respected those funding recommendations.
John, did we make these recommendations?
We did make them, we did make those recommendations.
But, I mean, if, that was just a recommendation, Greg, as, as this whole list was, and if something could be bonded and, and done through another means of, of funding as, as opposed to available funding. I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I think the sidewalks, to me, and I think it's evident here, were more important than to the, to the committee itself than the truck was. And just to buy, just to purchase the truck because the money's available, I mean, it was clearly number 13 on the list. I don't know if we would, I don't know if, if the intent was to keep going on the list and buying things until you have no money left.
No, the intent was to be respectful of what the committee's recommendation was and if I haven't conveyed that, I apologize.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not accusing or conveying anything, I'm just saying, I don't know if it was the desire of the committee, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm also looking at the list, and I don't know if it was the desire of this committee to see the truck replaced this year as opposed to something else that could have been, could have been done.
How old's the truck? Dick?
99, 1999.
Mr. Masary?
Greg, in your recommendation for bonding, and I don't know if you've taken a look, but I would assume that you would have to look at the years of each of the items for bonding, and then look at our debt service and look at the impact of it. So what guidelines have you used for that, and what will be the impact on debt service going forward? I'm not talking about the enterprise items, okay?
We will have a separate bonding schedule for each item that's shown on this list, because under statute, you can only borrow a certain term for each of the items that are listed here. For example, the Town Road Program can only be bonded for five years, where something like asbestos abatement could be bonded for potentially upwards of 20 years. So we will have to develop a separate bonding schedule for each item that's on this list. But we are, if you look at the non-exempt debt going forward, we are anticipating that we'll have about $180,000 in additional non-exempt. We'll be retiring about $180,000 in non-exempt debt going into 2014. So we do have some flexibility to be able to add a little bit more debt onto our schedule. And that's what this proposal is.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to understand, based on your recommendations, whether that's going to be level debt going into next year, or whether we're going up, or what, based on what's being paid now?
We would not anticipate that we would, other than paying interest in 2014, we would not have any permanent debt payments in fiscal year 2014.
Yes, but then 2015 comes, and how, does that have a negative or a positive impact on the debt payment as we look at it today?
In 2014, we're retiring $180,000 in debt, so that is not going to spike up in 2015. That trend would continue in 2015 and beyond.
What's being proposed, Bob, if I can look at the numbers correctly, is $469,000. This is non-enterprise for bonding. Straight line, five years, is just under $94,000.
Okay, fine.
I think that's what you're driving at, right? So 180 dropping off, putting 94 back on.
Greg, as you know, there was some controversy regarding the booking counter enclosure at the police station. And there was some stuff that you had said you were going to look into and propose. Had you looked into any of that stuff?
No, I've conveyed my feelings to the police administration in terms of how we accomplish that. But no, we've not had an opportunity.
Because the problem I have with that is, is during the discussions and the back and forth that was going on, and I feel that this thing was kind of, my personal opinion is I think the booking counter enclosure was kind of sabotaged. And, and that being said, it got a low number, a low ranking, but there still hasn't been any follow-up. So, in other words, you turned around and said you were going to look into other avenues. That was beginning of February, middle of February. And that nothing's been done, and it's now the end of April, beginning of May.
Quite well taken.
To me, that's a problem. I think, I can't speak on behalf of everybody else on the committee, but I think everybody got kind of tired, because there were so many emails going back and forth as to how it was going to be done, and no one can come to a clear conclusion as to how it was going to be done, because one department wanted it done one way, and another department wanted it done another way. And it got so bad, as you saw, some of the emails, accusatory emails, and people going behind other people's backs, which to me should have been addressed, and to my understanding, it hasn't been done as of yet. But the problem I have with that is, we all stood there, the selectmen stood down there after the escape. We all agreed that something needed to be done about it. We all agreed, not only for the fact that, the potential of a future escape, but also the potential of an officer, the safety of an officer who's standing there with no, with no protection between him and a, you know, and a person under arrest. So I'm a little disappointed that this is so far down. And I think part of the reason is because, again, there was some controversy within, some undermining of it. And that nothing's been done since then is even more discouraging.
Could I just follow up with that? I don't know what went on within the Capital Planning Committee, but when I saw this list, I was surprised to see where it ended up. The five of us went down probably about a year ago to take a look. I think we all had some concerns about what had happened, how we're going to prevent it from happening in the future. I thought we were, the consensus was that something needed to be done sooner rather than later. So I don't know what went on behind the scenes. With this so far down on the list, I would have thought this would be a top priority for us to address. Quite frankly, I don't care what has to be done, should be done. I would think that the Police Department are probably in the best position to recommend as to what they feel in their experience would be adequate, sufficient for safety measures down there. So I would hope the parties could get together and come to some sort of agreement as to what's going to be done down there. Because it's still as disposed as it was a year ago, and we're almost a year past the incident, so.
Part of the issue, and maybe I'm missing a, missing the point again, I wasn't on the committee, Mr. Fordy was, all the discussion. But, I mean, my guess is, and maybe Chief you can help out, you know, some of the policies and procedures have been honed in a little bit and brushed up on as far as what takes place and, you know, how people are secured and all that sort of a thing. When someone comes in and gets, first of all, gets booked, you know, how many officers have to be present? And then two, make sure that they're secured, and then follow through as far as the regular checking up of the prisoners when they're in custody. And also ensuring that the maintenance of the video systems, the audio/video systems are working appropriately. What we were concerned about was, should someone escape their access to a certain series of buttons? That's what the major concern was, correct? It wasn't so much the safety of the officers per se, it was one of the officers and down there, similar situations to what occurred.
The, I, certainly that brought, the escape brought this all to a head. But the system was designed improperly from the get-go. We've spoken to the engineers and the experts that were involved in the design, and they said the same thing. The offices are exposed. There's, the way the booking counter is, is certainly, a prisoner could grab an officer. There's weapons available, there's airborne diseases that could certainly be transferred from the prisoner to the offices, as well as blood, saliva, all sorts of things. So the offices are exposed. This particular proposal that we came up with would eliminate the possibility of escape and also protect the officers from behind what we proposed to be a Plexiglas type of enclosure. So we did come up with a plan, and there was just some controversy as to what kind of a Plexiglas it was going to be, whether I requested bulletproof glass, which I did not, or whether the contractor was providing that, because he thought it was what was best for us. So I was unaware of the pricing until it was proposed at a meeting with the Capital Improvement Committee. So, and that's where we seemed to...
So the controversy, again, I don't, I'm just, the controversy was going back and forth. Was it based upon the type of material that was going to be used, or?
That's the, the pricing was a little bit too high. Certainly, when it was proposed, to me, is I said, I don't know that, because I was never proposed that. So the committee thought that we need to do a little bit more work to come together. It just didn't happen.
But some of the other controversy wasn't, in fact, it wasn't even needed at all.
Well, that came after the fact, it was people's opinions that were not...
It was stated in an email.
Correct. Not from the Police Department, that this isn't even needed, and, you know, I didn't think it was the place...
If proper rules and procedures were followed, then it wouldn't be needed.
Correct.
That's what was stated in an email.
I think it was, I think it was a little different than that.
I have it with me, if you want me to pull it up.
Tony, you have to come up to the microphone, I'm sorry. Folks at home, they can't hear you.
I think there were two parts to it. One was the Plexiglas, and whether that had to be bulletproof, or whether it just needed to be a protection from bodily fluids. And the other part was the releases for the doors, whether they needed, whether there could be a mechanical electronic solution to that, rather than somebody going in and pushing buttons, that they would have to...
Right, but if that was enclosed, then you wouldn't need it to be included, right?
The change was, or what one of the recommendations was, was not be entirely enclosed, but there be a Plexiglas at the booking station to protect the officer. And that the door release be changed from what it is now to a electronic door release that wouldn't be activated by anybody just touching buttons. And I think that's kind of where this thing fell apart, that everybody was supposed to get together and figure it out. And I don't think that's been figured out yet. But the original plan had an enclosure, moving a door.
Right.
A very expensive piece of glass.
The whole thing was $22,000, I believe, to do that.
And just a one note on the, as far as the electronic release buttons. Those have to be accessible in case of an emergency. And for us to be unlocking it or fobbing it, it certainly would, you know, create some sort of an obstacle for us. This particular enclosure that we were proposing would take care of all of it at once, without having to have all these extra steps in place. So I'm not sure how much it would be for half of Plexiglas, or for what we asked to go straight up to the ceiling. That was never, a contractor never gave us an estimate on that. I don't believe it was ever requested that he give us an estimate on it. So I've been working with the DPW, trying to just resolve the issue. It's out of my hands as far as the building end of it. I'm just here to give my advice on how I think we should eliminate the possibility of an escape and the possibility of an officer getting injured, or a communicable disease or something being transferred to our offices.
We still requiring two offices for booking?
It always has, that never changed. That would never change.
So one's going to be inside, one's going to be outside, I mean?
Correct. But the officer is actually standing as close as here to the prisoner when he's being booked. And like I said, we talked to the expert when he did come down to give us the estimate, and he said that he had told the project manager that this should have been done from the beginning, from the get-go on this whole thing. So what the suggestion that he made and what we were suggesting was pretty close to the final project that we proposed here to the CIP. And, you know, like I said, we wish we could have got together a little bit and coordinated our efforts a little bit more. But I think it fell through the cracks, and unfortunately, you know, we're in a position not where we were back in August of last year. No further progress.
Mr. Masary?
My view of it was that what was important, as Mike had said, was more related to the safety of the officer. And that, you know, I saw what was done down the other half of Town Hall, it was done for short money, very quickly. And although it would be a little different over there. I guess I looked at the issue of a prisoner running free, based on what happened before, was take, could, can be taken care of reliably by the appropriate procedure of checking the door. So I never considered that to be the critical piece of it. And then Mike had said, he had reminded us about the fact that, you know, it would be easy to put a key fob system in there, because it's already existing in the system, it's just an addition. But that doesn't get around the emergency exit issue. So, you know, I felt that something had to be done, but not to the extent of what was originally requested. That forced at least my vote down on the list. Now, if there was a different proposal based on, you know, taking care of what was considered to be the most critical piece of it, you know, then probably the committee would have had that elevated, because we all voted on these things. You know, and I guess it's a matter of, you know, how everybody looks at things, too. You know, there's no right or wrong, and the end result might not be the best result either. That's the unfortunate part of the whole process. I guess, I have a couple of other concerns about the selection, and we talked about the bonding issue. The DEIR wastewater from available funds. Did you say something about bonding a piece in that, Greg?
The difference?
I did. The difference between the available funds and the total project cost of $266,000?
Was the $266, Dick the final number on that, or was that just still an estimate? That's what we needed, right? Okay, all right, okay. Can I answer the question, or you?
Anyone else in Capitol? Mr. Briscoe?
I'm really not 100% sure what happened with this particular item at the police station, but I will, I do remember it, though, it was about a year ago, Mr. Delaney, you are correct. And I am surprised it's so far down on the list, because it seemed like when we all went over there and took our time to commute with the chief and walked through this, it was very concerning to me, once you worked with the process and you understood the vulnerabilities that were associated with the design of the current setup down there. It seemed pretty high, on, at least I thought, the majority of the board, that this gets addressed in this CIP cycle. It just seems to me, I'm not sure, Mr. Balakonis, where you were on all this, but there seems to be either breakdown in leadership, management, or communication. But it just seems like we're airing some dirty laundry here at a Port of Slackman meeting, which is completely unnecessary. You know, this stuff should have been addressed at your level before it got to here. So I'm not sure where the ball got dropped, but as far as I'm concerned, it got dropped with you, and it should have, it should have never came here. So I'm a little disappointed in that.
There's no ball being dropped here. It's been rated by the committee on this list the way it is.
Mr. Balakonis?
Mr. Capitol?
I'm going to continue on. It's my opportunity to speak. I'm just giving you my opinion, you don't have to like it, okay? And another question I have is, I don't understand one thing. You know, this past week in the payroll, I'm a little concerned about this whole process, how it's working, because in payroll this week, I asked a question about some work...
What's that have to do with...
Oh, it does. Oh, no, because it's related to here, because it was, in payroll, there was work being done.
Get a show.
An item here that is part of CIP.
All right.
And apparently it got voted down, the response I got to a question I had about some overtime was that because CIP voted it so low, we decided we're going to take care of things in overtime. Again, I'm concerned about the whole process. Is that really what we're going to do, is if it gets voted down low here?
You're speaking about number 18, DPW garage tents?
Correct. So I'm, Mr., so I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, it took me a little while to get there, but I'm concerned, is that the process?
I just want to make sure that...
If we're not going to get it accepted here, we're going to take care of it in overtime. I like an answer to that. I don't need an answer to the first one, I just wanted to voice my opinion on it. And second one, though, I would like an answer on this one, on number 18. So are we doing this in overtime now? Is that what we're going to do?
You're asking me or the town administrator?
Somebody that can answer the question. I'm going to ask the town administrator.
The DPW had incurred some overtime preparing the garage tent stick?
The pad.
The pads. Well, I can say to you that the department head didn't come to me for authorization on that overtime. So I'm going to ask Mr. Carnavale to speak that, because he doesn't come to me to get us overtime pre-approved.
The project from last weekend was, I was out of town last week, Mike, so I apologize. We're going to construct a lean-to on the side of the building to replace the tents. The tents have proven not to be stand-up to the weather, and obviously not going to be fundable to replace. fundable to replace, so not gonna do it over. We just leveled the area. I could've contracted it out, but we worked on numbers and it's, to move 250 yards of soil for $1,500 was much cheaper than a contractor. So, basically leveling a piece of earth to put a lean-to on. It's just a one-time...
Sorry, the information I got was something different than what you're telling me. I was provided information on my question that because of the vote on number 18 got voted so low that you decided to go ahead and try to accomplish it using the use, through the use of overtime?
No, through the use of my operating budget. I'm gonna buy the materials, I'm gonna buy, if it's cheaper to use a contractor to install the telephone poles to support it, I'll use a contractor.
Maybe, again, you two should get together and get this clarified again. And that's other board members, you were on the email, if I'm reading it wrong, or Liz, actually...
Trying to pull it up, because that was not my understanding as the DPW director has explained it, so I'm confused.
Well, we're checking that. Dick, what are garage tents, and what are they used for?
You go down DPW Garage, the tents, I believe, were used either when the fire department was being renovated or the police, there were these large tents.
Canopy-like things?
They're metal-framed structures, and I think there were surplus, I think the park department had a couple that blew away one or two hurricanes ago. Ours got ripped up on one side, so it's just, it's essentially a big wall that just, the wind hits it, knocks it over, which stores equipment we need during emergencies. So, it's tents at the garage, somehow it got transposed.
So, basically, it's...
Storage of vehicles and equipment outside.
Vehicles that aren't used on a regular basis but may be needed in an emergency.
Correct. Whereas we have a bucket truck now and we have a excavator preloaded on the trail ready to go.
And your plan currently now is to build some kind of a lean-to off the side of the garage to cover the...
We brought the building inspector, he approved the design. So, first part was just to level the area where it's gonna go, it was cheaper to do it with in-house staff. There's other pieces where it's gonna be carpentry, I'll see what the cheapest way to do it within the budget. If there's no money in the budget, we won't do it.
Mr. Carnavale, I just, I have some issues because I don't understand why you would propose a tent just a short time ago, and then that doesn't rise to the level where it's going to be funded, and all of a sudden you change course and say, well, they're not weather resistant, I'm gonna go build a lean-to that's more weather resistant. So, just doesn't, doesn't add up for me. Seems like...
So, we're gonna repair something that's broken repeatedly versus replace it with something that won't break in the future? That doesn't make sense?
Well, all of a sudden you changed, I presume it was you who proposed...
No, this project, this project is dead as far as I can read. It's not gonna happen based on the rating.
Maybe I can ask my question, I'll give you sufficient time to answer. The CIP committee was formed less than a year ago. They came to you sometime probably in the fall, early winter, and one of your projects was a DPW garage tents. Am I correct?
Repair, repair the existing tents at the garage from storm damage. You gotta look at the details to get the best. And that was combined with another one.
Replace DPW garage tents. In the booklet we received, it says replace DPW garage tents. So, you can probably understand how I'm a little suspect. When it doesn't rise to the level where it'll be funded, you then find a way to get what you want, circumventing the process. So, I'm a little suspect. I understand it's a lean-to, I understand why, if that wasn't, if you realized that the tents were not weather resistant enough for you, why wasn't your proposal for the lean-to back six months ago versus garage tents? I'm a little suspect.
So, what's the question, sir?
When did you change course in terms of requesting garage tents now to doing a lean-to? Garage tents as a capital project versus...
I requested money for two projects at the DPW garage. One was the relocation of the garage lift, item number six, and currently the repair of the existing tents. The committee went out, they saw the tents, they saw there were damage, I showed them the tents to fix the tents. So, if the wording was transposing what you have, it's not what I submitted, the little blue, whatever that is. Does my capital thing say replace? However, I guess, the whole capital change, the whole concept of small capital's gone away. For example, the issue on the rugs in places now, now that there's no capital, small capital that are under $15,000, things just can't get done anymore. There's no funding to do small capital, it's not gonna be done through this. So, there are smaller items like the rugs that are filthy at the building on the common first floor, if you go there. That's, to do those rugs would be 10% of the entire maintenance budget for the town building department. So, sometimes you have to find ways to get things done.
We have an item in the CIP which is for, didn't we address that, Don?
We did, we had a request that it be $50,000 of the operating budget for those things.
And is it not in the operating budget? Did we not put it in the operating budget?
Put it in the form of a warrant article, and we didn't specify the funds, but we do, we do have an estimate of up between $50,000 and $100,000.
I'm sure the rugs aren't gonna cost $50,000.
This is the reason why I brought this particular point up, because it just seems like the whole process is, I'm not 100% sure where it all is. It, you know, it seemed like first it was going great, you guys had a track, you were following, it seemed to make a little sense to me, but now when I see these types of things going on, I'm a little confused. And there definitely seems to be a lot of misunderstanding or breakdowns in communication on this one. So, maybe we should just table this discussion until our next meeting, and town administrator and DPW director can get together and get this...
We're leaning on the team.
Well, then, I just don't wanna see any more overtime done to fulfill a capital project because it was moved down on the list, because it was moved low down on the list. That is not what our intent ever was, at least my understanding of it.
I guess, Mike, I think we're micromanaging the hell out of this. It's unnecessary. We've approved the capital budget, I mean, we've approved an overtime budget for the DPW. We have to give our managers some leeway to get done what they think are priorities. How can we second guess every single little thing? I mean, I'm just getting tired of this, just tired of nitpicking. It makes no sense to me. You know, if you wanna give a department head an initiative to say, look, we want you to find a way of saving $50,000 and in your budget for the coming year, right, and come back with a presentation, how you're gonna do it, I can respect that. But, you know, given a request and then giving it to a committee to go through and determine what the priorities are and voting on it, you miss a lot of things. And that's what all this miscommunication is, you know. I personally missed a couple of the meetings because of the times that they were scheduled and my business. But, that being said, you know, the committee went and talked to various people and they got input, and I think the committee relied on that input to make some decisions. They put it into a schedule, and it may not be perfect and it may not be right, but it was the schedule. Town administrator's job was to go, okay, one is, it's really his responsibility for the capital plan, so we shouldn't be taking that away from him. And two is, the amount of money available, you know, that's the limiting factor here. I mean, you know, when we give $10,000 to the recreation committee, right, and we know how tight the budget is, you know, we've put a burden on them to go find a solution because we decided that was a priority over something else. And then we have to come back next week and say, yeah, we put the $10,000 into recreation as you requested, which I'm sure they're gonna do, and as a result, we couldn't find the money, so we've had to take $10,000 out of the overtime budget from DPW or police and fire. You know, I think that, you know, we're, we have a right to oversee, but we don't have a right to micromanage, and I think that's where we're headed, and it concerns me deeply.
Mr. Briscoe?
I'll try to be quick, I will, I will try to be, not trying to micromanage, I was asking a question to understand the process, okay? When I see, when I, when I look, and I won't sign the payroll anymore, that may make it a little easy for you, okay? But when I see that the response to my question is that because a particular item fell so low on the list, they're gonna try to address it through overtime, well, this is $15,000. Even though I was only looking at a $1,500 expenditure, my concern was it was gonna turn into $15,000 over the next several weeks. That's why I asked the question. So, I'm not micromanaging the $1,500, I'm micromanaging the $15,000. I don't think it was ever designed, Bob, to go and, if you can't get it done through CIP, which is a process, I like the process, that you go ahead and you try to circumvent it using another solution. I think it's a great idea to work with the town administrator and say, okay, I can't get this done here, they, you know, you didn't get ranked up high enough, we don't have the money to get it done, this is what I'd like to do, and we have some level of communication, so when we see this stuff show up in our payroll each week, we have an idea what we're signing. But, you know, if the concern is for the board members that, you know, it's picky and micromanaging, I won't sign the payroll going forward. I'm perfectly fine doing that.
What I'm hearing tonight is actually one of the primary reasons why I voted against the formation of the capital improvement committee, or advisory committee. I heard the town administrator being criticized for how things were ranked here and not following it. You know, it's supposed to be, like, I wonder, if we're gonna have this capital improvement committees, we gotta get a group of people in the room, talk about it, prioritize things, whatever you're gonna do, but it's still, as Mr. Messerri pointed out, the town administrator's responsibility. And I think we've got him in a situation here now where if he were to take a recommendation and not rank it the way that it was ranked here, and he's prioritizing things the other way, he's being criticized for it. Well, he didn't rank it, the committee ranked it. His job...
He's a member of the committee.
I know he's a member of the committee, but, but he still is ultimately responsible for putting together the capital approval plan and administering the day-to-day operations of the town. And I agree with Bob, I mean, we're going down a slippery slope as far as trying to micromanage what's going on on a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and then annual basis, but micromanaging certain things. If we have a need out at the DPW garage to shelter some of our equipment, then let's meet the need, you know, and if we can do it within the current operating budget, then let's do it within the current operating budget. Take it off the list. You know, if it was a tent and a lean-to works better, so it's a tent, now it's a lean-to works better. I don't care, shelter the equipment and make it work. But I don't want this guy sitting over here saying, okay, this is the way it came out, so this is what I have to do. And then when he doesn't do it, he's gonna get his head handed to him. We're paying him...
Can I ask for criticism, Steve?
Yeah, I think Mr. Briscoe and Mr. Foody both were very critical.
No, I did not, I did not criticize him.
I thought the tone and the tenor was wrong.
Yes, but that wasn't, that wasn't geared towards him, first of all. He knows what I'm talking about. There was some, there was some...
You know, how did it fall so far below? You know, how did this one particular item fall so far below?
That's right, because if...
When it was such a big priority.
I'll tell you what, I'll provide you with all the information, then you make a decision. How the chief was undermined by another department head because he didn't wanna see that, that project go forward, and how, how nothing happened to it. And I'll tell you what, if you saw the emails, you'd be insulted at the accusations that came out of that email.
Again, I'm not privy to it, I haven't been privy to it. Maybe the majority of the board was privy to it.
Let's open it all up. Let me start reading emails.
Maybe the majority of the board was privy to it.
All right? Let me start reading emails. But don't sit here and accuse me of, of, of micromanaging people and all that. What I said was, what I said was fact, and the fact is, the fact is that, an email was sent, an email was sent out to committee members...
I believe I had the floor.
Mr. Foody, I'll let you respond, Mr. Delaney.
But how it was ranked, I heard an explanation from Don, I heard an explanation from Bob, that's where it fell. You know, how it got there, I don't know, I wasn't privy to it.
All right, sorry.
I wasn't privy to it. That being said, if the town administrator felt, if the town administrator felt that that particular project should be at the top of the list, I don't have any problem with saying, you know what, based upon all the discussion, the input, still from an operational standpoint, whatever the project is, whether you wanna use that as an example, specifics, I don't care. His job to run it, his job to say, this is our prioritization from what his vantage point is on the day-to-day operations. You know, and we're just, we're nitpicking and picking the thing apart here, whether it be this, is just a one example, and I don't know. We're not sending a good, strong message to our town administrator, say, okay, administer it. I have no problem with setting priorities and assisting him in setting those priorities. I have no problem disagreeing with him on the priorities that he may be setting. But I'm gonna do it in a respectful manner, in a proper form, and say, I'm sorry, you know, my personal opinion is here, majority doesn't think that way, so be it. But we're paying him good money to administer the town, oversee the day-to-day operations and make some recommendations to us, and I think we're getting to a point where maybe he is a little bit gun-shy, and we shouldn't be putting him in that position to be gun-shy. We shouldn't be doing that, and I believe that's where we're going and that's what we're doing, and that's why, you know, I like the idea of giving him an advisory committee to work and help set priorities as far as the capital, the capital plan, but I, this is going exactly where I thought it was gonna go, which I think is the wrong direction. So, and as far as if this is gonna, if you're sharing the information publicly, it's gonna satisfy your needs, that's fine.
Well, it is, because you accused me of something. It is, because you accused me of something, Steve.
If you would like to share with me privately, I'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
You accused me of, what I said wasn't geared towards the town administrator.
My impression, well, it was geared at somebody.
It was, you're right.
This department head was undermined.
That's right, he was, and he did. And we spoke about it afterwards.
Then where was it geared towards then?
I'll read the, Greg, should I read it?
No, if you're gonna have it, why don't you circulate it to everybody in an appropriate fashion? I haven't seen any, so...
It's public information, if you want to, Bob, I can provide it to you. I said at every single meeting, Steve, you weren't at one, so don't tell me what happened at those meetings, okay? So, don't tell me what happened at those meetings. Don't accuse me of anything, Steve, all right?
I was appointed to the committee.
Don't accuse me of anything.
And don't accuse me of not being there.
But I'm just saying, you can't comment on what you don't know happened.
Two members were...
I think I had the floor this time.
Two were appointed to the committee.
I think I had the floor.
You know, so, you and Mr. Messerri were appointed. Not me, so don't accuse me of not being in the place where I was appointed.
I didn't say, I didn't say...
Didn't you dig so?
I said, you don't know what happened because you weren't at the meetings.
Enough.
Enough, gentlemen, enough.
The information wasn't shared either.
The thing, you know, police officers here.
Enough. Mr. Foody, if you wish to read it, it's your choice.
I'll share with the, I'll share with the members.
I see two gentlemen are rising to the podium. Sounds like, I don't know a thing, but it sounds like the two department heads that are involved are here, so. More than welcome to hear it, hopefully we can...
I'm not sure this is the venue to speak about what Mr. Foody's talking about. I think it's something we should speak with the town administrator on between the DPW director and myself. I think that clearly I felt at the time that we weren't given a fair opportunity with this particular project. I've let the town administrator know that, and at this point, I respect the decision that the committee's made. We put our best foot forward, the committee made their decision, and at this point, we're gonna comply with whatever it is they say, and we'll deal with the internal security measures. We certainly wanna present this again at some point in the future, and if we can come to a better agreement going forward, more coordinated effort, I think the committee would be satisfied at that time. But I'm not gonna sit here and debate what our issues are in public forum. It's not the place for it, and I respectfully would like to see the board move on from it. I appreciate the support, but I just don't think it's the venue. I don't know what the DPW director feels, but that's my...
Well, just from the technical aspects, I think Mike expressed what he wanted, John Rolfe gave an estimate, there was some sticker shock on the estimate, and I haven't been involved with the project ever since. Are there other administrative ways to do it?
Well, like I said, I think we should talk to the town administrator. I think there were emails going back and forth which Mr. Foody's speaking of, and it clearly was not geared towards what was being put in. It was more opinions on whether this project should go forward or not.
And accusatory of some employees at the police station. I would like to see you two gentlemen, I would like to see you two gentlemen, the town administrator, schedule a meeting, work with, come to some sort of meeting of the minds, I think the three, three, discuss it, to dissolve whatever issue...
I can tell you that there is no issue at this point between any of us. This was a one isolated incident. So, this is not as if we're, you know, we're still working together on other projects. This was, this was clearly an incident where this was, you know, something that was important to us, it's a need, not a want, and I felt as if all the projects I presented were the same priorities, or else I wouldn't have presented them. or else I wouldn't have presented them. So, you know, I, I felt as if it was, should've been done. But again, I respect the, the decision, they ranked them, however, they felt based upon cost and need, and, and, and I'm, we're moving forward, we're gonna continue to try to resolve our, you know, best secure how we feel we can. And if there's an opportunity in the future for us to present this project again, I will. But like I said, we'll work a little bit closer on the project and come to a amicable solution for it. It didn't happen in this case, there's, there's no question about it. And unfortunately, they were a little bit confused when, when we weren't on the same page, and, and I don't disagree with them saying, well, if you're not on the same page, then how can we possibly go forward with this project?
And that was my only issue, I didn't understand why it fell so low, I don't get an understanding why it fell low.
Correct. And it was no fault of the committee.
And I think if it's gonna be a, you know, question of funding source, whether it's the available funds, and there are no more available funds, in a project like this, and again, I don't disagree with any member of the board, we were down there, so we saw this as a priority and an area that needed to be addressed. So, but the committee decided that if we're gonna go forward with it, it sounds as though, or appears as though, it's gonna be from available funds, but if there aren't any funds available, and it didn't rise that high, then you know what? Bond it, we can bond it, like a kind of a capital project, and bond it for five years, costs you five thousand dollars a year, six thousand dollars a year, get it done, you know, rather than postponing it. But, so it appears to me that it's the, the source of funding that didn't allow it to be prioritized, and maybe there's something else, we'll go up to the story, but to me-
That's not how it-
Okay, but to me, if it's one of the-
It's based on votes of the, the committee members.
Okay, but to me, this is what I'm seeing, if the town administrator thinks this was important, and the board thought it was important, I don't care what the capital improvement committee said. It's like putting ten thousand dollars in the recreation budget. It wasn't anybody on radar screen, other than we said this was what it should be. To us, this was a project that we thought was important, should get done. So, to me, capital approval committee or not, they ranked it, they didn't agree with us, but you know what? We ultimately set the prioritization of things, direct the administrator, I don't think he was in disagreement with us, but, you know, the approach is, come to an agreement as to what the approach should be and get it done. And it should be done in the next fiscal year, shouldn't have to wait twelve months or fourteen months to get it done, in my estimation. But that's the problem with committees, sometimes. Someone's gotta take the ball by the horns and make a decision.
I don't, I don't view this, I don't view this as a problem with the committee.
It is when, when, when your leadership is second guessing themselves, because of what takes place.
Mr. O'Leary, I, I disagree.
I'm sure, okay.
I, I disagree, I don't, I don't believe Mr. Valiopoulos was second guessed in terms of what he selected here to be put forward in terms of proven capital projects for FY14 based upon what he views as being available funds of fifty-six thousand dollars, and what he thinks we can afford to bond FY14. I don't think there was any question from this board, but it jumped out at me as to why this counter enclosure was at sixteen when, I thought the five was, it thought it was higher. So now I'm getting some understanding that there was due to some behind-the-scenes disagreement, somewhere along the line. Department heads didn't come to an agreement, so, all right, what's the committee to do? The committee then says, all right, we're gonna have to vote a lower priority as a result. No second guessing of the town administrator. I, I don't view it that way, so. Mr. Prisco.
No, and again, my comments, to defend myself somewhat here. My comment was, Steve, was based on this all externally happening, it should've been managed with the town administrator. When there was this conflict, it should've been managed, they should've all been brought together and said, let's get this cleaned up. These emails, he was well aware of these emails, apparently, I haven't seen them either, but were floating around. They apparently knew that there was some disagreement between these two department heads. That's what my comment was based on, nothing to do with the rankings from the town administrator, 'cause we haven't even really got there yet. So, my comments were based on leadership and management, only associated with this particular issue, 'cause look what it grew into. And if we did that, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now.
Gentlemen, thank you. Can we go forward?
One last comment, if I may. I, I'm just on, on the CIPC process as a whole. Probably timings are good, but, you know, Don was our, Don Keller was our chairman, I thought he did a great job. And he actually did a lot to kinda diffuse a lot of this stuff, and, and, and I thought the committee itself worked well together, aside of this one, this one issue. So, I just wanna thank Don for, for doing a great job, kinda keeping it all together and getting this all-
That's why I get the big bucks.
Put together, and, and Liz did a great job putting, putting the final product together, so. Thank you both, and I apologize if what, anything I said tonight put a damper on all the hard work you guys did over the last four months.
Does that bring us to recommending, or not, is that one of that?
I would ask you to consider the capital plan, since we've discussed it.
I'm sorry, trying to, trying to jump ahead.
Just, just a question, is, is there room for an additional six thousand dollars in bonding? If we were to prioritize?
Of course, of course you would.
And then, whatever the final detail is, work it out however the project is. So I, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we endorse the capital plan as presented with one additional project, which would be project number sixteen, and the funding source to be bonded.
I have a motion.
Go.
I move.
I move to accept the capital plan as presented by the town administrator with an additional project of number sixteen, police booking center enclosure, twenty-eight thousand dollars, to be bonded.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, discussion.
I guess, I've never disagreed that that is needed, it's just how it's gonna be done, and the costs seem to be very high. So I, I think that, along with what Steve is proposing, to fund it, but I, I think that we oughta have a plan of what we're gonna do and have some cost estimate that is more reasonable than the twenty-eight thousand dollar number that was up there. I mean, and if it's really justified spending twenty-eight thousand dollars, so be it, but my, my sense is that, based on what I learned about it not having to be bulletproof and all of this, that it could be done for less money. And, you know, it, it brings out this, this whole issue of, you know, we talked about just providing a sum of money into the DPW budget for building maintenance, such that some of these things don't fit into the, the capital numbers as we're going up to the twenty-five thousand dollar range especially, we're at fifteen now, that, you know, that, that money should be put in and identified in terms of what, you know, what it's gonna be spent on, at least a portion of it. And you got the emergency stuff that's gonna come up that you can't predict, and deal with these kinds of things within that budget. Which gets to a concern I have, and that is that we're grossly understaffed in building, building maintenance. We rely on John Walsh for just about everything, but light bulbs in, carpentry where, everything else. And, you know, maybe over the next budget cycle, that we give some serious consideration to the way we're, we're doing that. It seems to me that, one, is projects take a long time, they get into a queue of priorities based on things, and then interrupted by emergencies, and I think we gotta find a better way doing that kind of stuff.
Can somebody just explain to me about number ten, is, what school that is, and just a little bit about that project?
No, what's in your packet?
It's the-
New school?
Hood and the Little.
Hood and what, Hood?
It's the Hood and Little.
Yep.
And, well, it's, I, I was, so it's ranked in the middle, and priority-wise, why does it have to be done this year?
Because the, it's, the floor, it's the floor tiles that have the festers in. And there's serious whis spots where now it's particulating, so that's the-
This is only a portion of it, there's, there's a lot more there.
It's just those areas that are bad.
I think it totally said dollars, about two fifty or so, right?
Carl really didn't have a good number, he said it could be upwards of a half million dollars if you did everything, but this was what needed to be done.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm good.
Mr. Kelliver and Mr. Keller, you wanna weigh in? Would you, Kate wanna weigh in on the motion?
Of adding that?
Yes.
I think if we had more information, it would've been ranked higher. I think we all saw it as important, but it was, the project just was, was just too far apart on making any recommendation on the project, and that's why it got to such a low, low ranking. If it had, if it had been re, reworked, it most likely would've had a higher ranking to it. Would it have been over fifteen thousand dollars? I don't know. So it may have, may have fallen outside of the capital budget anyway. And I think that's one of the things we looked at and said, that if it's something that's just plexiglass like they did in the, in Town Hall, and at that time, we're talking about electronic fix to it, as I said, that it probably wouldn't have been fifteen thousand dollars, it was something just needed to get done. And we weren't, we weren't, ranking it is not important, we were ranking the, the presentation of the confused project. There was another one that was like that coming out, and it was the, the evidence locker. And, and that got all mixed up with, with trying to repair a leak that we've been trying to repair apparently for the last ten years. And those got separated out, and I guess, gather the, the evidence locker issue has been, been resolved. But that was something that came through on the capital budget, and it wasn't a, a solution that was proposed that was going to solve both of those problems, so it got separated, and Greg worked with, with, with the chief and got that taken care of. So I think this one here, I think this, it's gotta be a meeting of the minds of what are the things to do.
And just one thought on that though, we did, based upon your suggestion, we did have the contract to come back in.
Yeah.
We eliminated the bulletproof glass, and I believe it was Lexan that they were proposing, they only saved three thousand dollars.
So it was, okay.
So, and when this originally came out, I was told that they were gonna be transporting all the bulletproof glass up from Maryland, and that's why there was such a high cost. And so we asked them to rework it, and it was only saving the three thousand. That's where the twenty-eight thousand dollar number came from, it was originally thirty-one. So we have done that, we met with the DPW, with John Walsh, he had the contract to come back in, and this is what they are suggesting, suggesting as the best alternative for us. And there's a lot more to it than just putting plexiglass on it, it's how you're gonna lag it, there has to be a door installed, there has to be a slider for where they would put their information, but it's a little bit more than just putting a plexiglass up. So that number, from what I understand, we, the town administrator directed the, the, John Walsh took in with another contractor, or maybe two, and from what I understand, he did have contractors come in there, and they just, was too, either too big of a job, or not worth it done. So we essentially got one estimate, and that estimate is twenty-eight thousand and some change.
That's what the change from bulletproof to-
Which is from Lexan, which is-
There's two grades, there's this basically prison grade, or, and then it's like, down here, it's just like, like a store, it's apples and oranges, so Mike wanted more of the, on the heavy-duty side, that would lag into the ceiling, versus this one here, if somebody jumped up and kicked it, it would go right over, Tom. But he wanted something more beefy.
Well, I think, I think this is where the controversy starts, I didn't want anything. I brought the contractor and I told him what we needed to do, and he suggested what we should have, not me, 'cause I'm not a construction guy, I know police work. They suggested this, this type of glass, because of the scratch, the wear and tear over a period of time, it gets foggy, there's all sorts of negatives that he said with just a regular plexiglass. So I went with what his, the expert suggested, not, not me. And I think that's where a lot of controversy was, this is not what I want, this is what we need. And I just said, tell me what we can do to secure this and make it safer, and that's the proposal, that the experts came up with. And I'm relying on that, because, like I said, it's not my field.
Thank you.
And now the three hundred thousand dollars for the roads, so this list that was provided to us in the supplement, is that what the three hundred thousand dollars is gonna cover for FY2014? Is everything on this list, or is there another list?
There's seven hundred thousand dollars in items identified for fiscal year 2014.
Okay, so the three hundred thousand dollars gets added to the chapter ninety money to make up the total amount of the seven hundred?
That's correct.
Okay. And one last question on this, so when I read it, Dick, when I, if I could, quick question. Just so I know how to read this, if you look at, like, Elm Street project, you call it the Elm Street project, it says Swan Pond Road Cemetery, what does that mean?
The beginning and end of the construction.
Okay, so, from Swan-
All that's tried to set up, they have beginning and endpoints, or, or individual segments.
Okay.
So there, there's a series of projects called crack sealing, which you've seen before, they've-
Yep.
There's another one you're gonna see called either pavement preservation, or another one called hot in place, which is where they literally heat up the asphalt in a big machine, rejuvenate, and put it back down and roll it. And this other one, mill, millen-
Mill and overlay.
Overlay is basically you mill off what's there, either the entire part or pieces of it, to get a crown in the road so it drains properly, and then put a inch and a half to two-inch binder over it, or a top coat. Or some other ones is reconstruction.
Reclamation.
Reclamation. That's when they pulverize everything, all the way back down, haul away the excess, regrade it, new binder coat, it's basically a brand-new road. The intent of the pavement management is to get away from doing that kind of work and do more for the preventative side, which would get more roads kept good for the town on a longer basis. Those are the types of work.
I'm just surprised I don't see Salem Street here, it's such a mess, it's like Swiss cheese all over it.
Part of the, the model is, it looks at the roads, it looks at the, they're classified by arterial, connector, local and local dead end, and based on the volume of traffic, that, that has a weighting in the, besides the actual condition of the road itself.
Thank you for-
Salem Street is actually a private way, it's not owned by the town. It's one of those ones where, yeah, it is terrible, I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary. Just specific to Charles Street, I see it's a reclamation.
Right.
We have that project that's being extended down to join Charles Street, and when we were at the public hearing, we talked about extending the utilities down into Charles Street, specifically gas. I know-
The gas company?
The engineer has, has had conversation with the gas company, and they haven't been too enamored by the idea of extending the opportunity for those five or six houses to, to join in, even though it's about one, six hundred feet of line that needs to be laid down, because the new subdivision is coming down to the top of Charles Street, and at the base of Charles Street and Havel Street, the gas line goes right by. So all that's gonna be happening is, is five or six houses that are being excluded for the opportunity to tie in because the gas company isn't too keen on the idea. In the meantime, we're looking to, to a reclamation of Charles Street to get all up. The project that's being proposed up there has to come partway down Charles Street for drainage issues, which even shortens the distance as far as digging that has to take place. So, do we have a cost estimate as to what it would cost, what the gas company has said, first of all, to us, is what it would cost to?
Yes.
What would that be?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand dollars?
The gas company has changed, they no longer will put in gas main for free. It used to be, now they, they're transitioning to what they tell us, they wanna get into the transmission of gas, I'd say really the retail side. So several people have asked us for this, and, and Mike's contacted with them, that's where they're moving. So they give us a price, and uses broken number number home, so I've sent letters to each of those homeowners saying, this is what the gas company says, here's the price, here's the price per home. They wanna work up to about six thousand, there's six houses and one vacant lot, I believe. And so the homeowner would say, if you wanna do it, let me know, we'll coordinate with the gas company. So, I talked to Julia's husband, I forget his name.
Dolan?
Dolan, Mr. Dolan, and they don't want it, they already have oil heat, they just put a new burner in. So, no one's interested in paying that kind of money to do that.
Well-
None of the residents, excuse me, are interested in showing up that money to install a gas main and service.
Well, we're talking about doing basically a betterment and a lot- Well, we're talking about doing basically a betterment and forcing the residents to make the connection that the gas company should be doing anyway, particularly in conjunction with the reclamation of Charles Street. I mean, it makes so much sense.
They won't do it for free anymore.
Well, I, I think we need to, to have the government service representative from national grid come before this board and tell us that to our face. Because, you know, over the years, we've had lots of meetings with them, and a few years back, when they were looking to tie in the whole school, this is a few years back, you know, they wanted to come in through Westwood Circle, and we insisted, no, go up Havel Street if you want that particular customer. You know, they have a monopoly, and having control of that monopoly, they have an obligation, I believe, to, to continue to expand it. And we have a number of areas in this town where there are a lot of people who would be more than willing to tie in if the line went by. And I think the utility has an obligation to continue to expand those lines in this community. So I'd like someone to come in before this board, stand at their podium, and tell us, no, we're not going to do that anymore. Because every time they come in here looking for an easement, I'm going to say, no, we're not going to do that anymore. You want to buy an easement? You want to fix it? Go ahead. You know, it's ridiculous that these utilities, who do have monopoly on the business here, are not willing to expand. So have Mike get in touch with whoever the representative is, and, Mr. Chairman, I think they need to be put on the agenda as soon as possible to, to come in and explain their position to us, and explain why they have no reason to expand in the town in our threading other than at the homeowner's expense or the town's expense, yet they have total monopoly on the business. I don't know what anybody else's feeling is.
I agree.
And Charles Street is a prime example of how, you know, for 500 feet of pipe, for a road that's already going to be dug up, now's the time to do it. And the utility should be, you know, whether someone ties in today or five years from now, it's an investment that they can make to provide that opportunity to the homeowners and to themselves.
Jonathan from the Finance Committee also asked the same question, and there's no gas. He lives on Scotland Heights.
Right.
There's no gas in the area, so his cost for his neighbors would have been $200,000 for the gas company. So that's, I will, it used to be Stan Yusevich, former mayor of Salem, I'll find out who it is now.
Stan? Oh, yeah.
It used to be Stan. I'm not sure if Stan's the guy.
Okay.
But you know Stan.
I wish it was. Yeah, I know Stan real well. Is it? Oh, great. Wait a minute. Good guy. Good guy, too bad he's going to take the brunt of it, but that's what he gets paid for. But the other thing is, I think we need to, and I know the, you probably have, but the, Fire Department has the maps of where all the, all the dead ends are for the, or where all the gas lines are. And I think we need to, as a board...
For the gas company?
...in conjunction with the DPW, to, to try and talk before they come in here, you know, where do we really want the expansion to take place, and where does it make the most sense from an economic standpoint for the gas company to expand if they desire to keep us happy?
Mike, talk to the marketing people, and that's the story we got from them. But I will contact Stan and, or whoever's in that office and arrange a visit.
And also, but let's take a look at the, let's take a look at where the gas lines are, and where they are, where they are not, where they should start connecting through.
Right. We have those mapped as well.
But Charles Street is a prime example of...
That's why that was kicked back a year or so, to let the drainage go in, and if the gas goes in, that's why Charles Street is not this year, it's, I think it's next year. I wish you guys had just a lot of the underground work. And we are coordinating on the underground drainage work and water work as well, as part of this, so we don't pave the street and have to replace a water valve.
Mr. Kellerman, you say you're actually talking spring of 2015?
Construction season, construction season 2014.
Fifteen? Construction season?
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, that's set up on fiscal year due to the appropriations, but I think construction season.
Thank you.
The gas, the drain pipe should be going in the next month or so on that project.
And now, are we requiring the, the contractor, obviously he's not going to resurface everything to...
He'll do a temporary patch.
He's going to do a temporary patch, which is going to save them money. Are they going to be contributing anymore with not being required to resurface appropriately?
The project was approved under the CPC long before my time, and I don't believe they require them to do anything. They might have asked them to put X amount of dollars into their sidewalk fund, but it's done independently at DPW, so sometimes, I don't know, they set these arrangements without us knowing.
But if there's something, if there's a set aside for, you know, sidewalk fund or whatever it is, whatever those, those dollars amount should be, to me, I think it should be set aside for that specific neighborhood in relation to getting the gas line expanded, so that maybe we have some wiggle room to negotiate with the gas company. So if we could find out what that dollar amount is, if there is a dollar amount...
I'll ask. Didn't yell out for a while still, so Debbie has that number.
But I don't know anybody else that, that the gas company come in. I think it's, I think it's necessary. You know, not just for Charles Street, but for the rest of the expansion of the town.
Number is correct, I believe there's a motion. Anything else?
Just in relation to the motion on Charles Street, I mean, I don't know if we should incorporate a laying of the gas line, $45,000 additional. That's, that's the only project I know where Charles Street specifically is head ended in two areas while it's dug up. And maybe we have time to go back in October and amend it, depending upon our discussions with the, with the gas company. But I think it's important to put it on the table, so that if the gas company and this utility is not going to cooperate, then we should be talking about expanding these lines ourselves as we're reclaiming the roadways. It's part of our capital expenditure road, road and pavement program.
Are we opening ourselves up to some people that had to pay this money before coming back to the town?
I don't know anybody else that's had to pay for running a pipe down the street. They may have to pay from the street to their home.
Right.
But not down the street. I don't recall any project in the distant past where anybody has actually paid the gas company to expand their gas lines. To this point, they've done it.
I don't know. But I mean, that, that could be pretty expensive. I mean, we, there's several streets in this town, I mean, many streets in this town that don't have gas down it. We're going to make that investment, and there's no return in that investment.
Other than a public health standpoint, you get underground tanks, oil tanks, and things like that.
I wouldn't be in favor of it myself, but, you know, if you get, the majority is, then go right ahead. I mean...
I'd rather see us negotiate first and see where we're at.
That's fine. Just that it, let's put it on the table, if we want to wait, see how those go, and then maybe revisit it at a later date. Because it's not going to be done for another six months or a year, or whatever.
Mr. Masari?
I need to wait for the gas company, but I think even before you consider doing that, you really have to look at the entire town, get some idea of what it's going to cost, and, you know...
Let's just say, let them have the maps.
Then you're opening Pandora's box to a whole bunch of other places, you know, there's people that don't have a water main, and fire hydrants, and, you know, and these areas.
We have a warrant out. I think we have a bigger obligation for that stuff.
So I think, I think it's worthwhile looking at, but I think we have to be very careful about what we do. And, you know, Steve, you know, was right. The gas company, when I moved in, we all had oil, and there was no gas main. Then they built the next section of the street, they put the gas, and the gas company wanted more customers, they paid for everything, including putting gas burners and your oil burner. So, different time.
All right. So on the motion, what else? The amendment of the, do you have that? Is it amended?
Which one? Charles Street? No, no, that was just discussion. No, no amendment. The only amendment is the police station project.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sheen Anus.
Include the police station project.
Include the police station.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Two articles are to get through tonight with you.
Sure.
You guys, it should be all set, right?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. The first is Article 22.
This is in the supplement?
No.
No.
It's the blue version that was in your, your original packet.
Okay. What, article number?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Thank you.
The fingerprints?
Yeah, this is the, I just wanted to be clear, the, the two licenses that are shown here were the proposal or recommendation of administration. I know that we had put in another list, which was all encompassing of all licenses that the Board of Selecting issued. And I was a bit confused when the, the motion was read several hours ago, as to whether all of those licenses would be included in this list, or just simply the two that are shown here.
Is that listed? Joe?
I'm just asking for some clarification on that.
There's the motion. Mr. Masari?
All of the above?
Well, I guess so.
Yeah, we did, we didn't take anything out.
Some of them I have, just because someone's got an automatic amusement device, usually it's a constant with a liquor license or the bowling alley, which has a liquor license, you know.
So will include all of the...
No problem. I'm sorry?
Will include all of those licenses in this list?
Yeah, but I think, as we discussed earlier, if you're coming in for one license, but you may have three, two or three additional, which would be one, one fee.
Say you might have a jukebox and an automatic amusement device. Yeah, common vigilance, all alcohol.
So any or all?
Or a wine license, or a public alcohol license.
I think it goes back to policy, right? The policy.
I think it goes back to policy and implementation of the fee structure. So I think the chief is going to work on as far as implementation from a policy standpoint, and fee structure standpoint, that nobody's getting hit twice if they happen to hold two, three of those licenses.
Yeah, doesn't make sense.
They're done with that one. The other article I wanted to talk to you about was in the supplement.
Which is what?
In the supplement.
On supplement.
Number 37. And it was called appropriation of bond premiums to reduce high school, middle school project borrowing costs.
This is related to the $5 million bond premium that the DOR has now approved that we can use for the project.
Right. And the, the action needs to take place before the close of the fiscal year, otherwise the DOR would require us to amortize this and include it in terms of paying down the debt over the 25-year life cycle. We don't want to do that. So this, the intent of this article was to reduce the borrowing by the amount of the bond premium, and I just wanted to clarify, the language in here is the standard language. The DOR provided to us when they issued the legal opinion back in March.
So is the, the actual bond premium, the $4,829?
Yes.
Okay. So we've been just using a $5 million around?
Around, yeah.
Including the 65 cents part.
Including the 65 cents.
Yeah, I can't figure out how that came about, but do we want to move to recommend?
Yes. Motion?
Second.
Another second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Sheen Anus. And then Article 37.
Do we want to move to recommend Article 22?
That's what I was going to ask you. Recommendation, Mr. Masari?
Please. Move to recommend Article 22.
The motion?
Second.
And then the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I can't hear you down here, I apologize.
Article 22, the one we just talked about.
The fingerprint one?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion?
The pit wall machine in your basement that requires fingerprinting, $100 license to...
Used to be those in summer, right, Mr. Ford?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sheen Anus.
We don't need to sort of...
That's Article 22.
Did you do 37, too?
We, that was the one, just trying to... Making sure you're following, following the bouncing ball down there.
It's funny, because that AC's on, and we hear, we hear it. You probably don't, it's hard for us to hear you.
We can hear you.
Apparently not.
Are there other articles, Mr. Masari?
None that require changes to the board decision.
Town administrators, right?
Not this evening?
Okay. All the new business. Mr. Masari?
Just want to report to the board that we had a community impact team breakfast this morning. It was well-attended, filled with both Representative Jones and also Senator President. And we're grateful to them for helping us get the $25,000 grant, and, you know, we've kind of set up for a future meeting to think about the next year for all that's been accomplished. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and I left a pile of them in the Agenda Room, and they all disappeared, so I think people took them. But this is the Community Impact Crisis and Resource Guide to the Town in our Threading. There have been a substantial number printed, and there's going to be put in locations for distribution, if anyone wants to come. And obviously, a bunch of people took them tonight. I won't go into the detail. The second thing is that the Community Impact Team is sponsoring a June 6th at 7:00 PM Social Media Savvy Summer and Beyond Seminar. It's going to be at the High School Auditorium, 7:00 PM on June 6th. Speaker's going to be Sean Edgerton, as seen on Fox News, CNN, and CBS Radio. And she's the author of a book called The Parenting Guide to Texting Facebook and Social Media, Understanding the Benefits and Dangers of Parenting in the Digital World. She's the founder of the Cyber Safety Academy, the Great American Nobel Challenge, and Teen Video Awards. What's important here is that, who's invited? Clearly, the parents of the children in the community, grandparents, aunts and uncles, and anyone else that may be supervising these children at any given time. And we would encourage those that are in that venue to certainly plan on attending. There's no charge, and I think there's a lot to learn.
Thank you, ladies.
That's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Frisco?
Just to follow up on the ceremony this evening, I just want to say, I thought it was a fabulous event. And for those board members that may have not got the opportunity to see the plaques that Mr. Masari went out and had made, if you get the opportunity to see them, you should. They were beautiful. They really did, wherever you got them done, Bob, they were really a nice tribute for the officers. Nicely done, and Mr. Dillane did a great job emceeing the event. I think we definitely impressed a lot of people, and I saw a lot of tears throughout the process, and that, that's a good thing. So, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Oh, and vote, vote, please.
Election beginning in seven and a half hours. Get some polls early. Mr. Rollair?
First thing is, just reminding people, if you're still up, you should really get the rest, and really think about who you're going to vote tomorrow. Vote for tomorrow. Obviously, there's two elections here in town. One is the, the primary, to choose the Democratic and Republican nominees for United States Senate to fill a vacancy created by Senator Kerry, becoming Secretary of State, very important election. important election. And then our own town election, where we actually have some interest now in the school committee race. So please come out and exercise your right to vote and make a difference. Best of luck to my two colleagues down there. I hope the, I hope the blacks don't beat you. The only other thing is, I just wanna mention the success of the Friends of the Council on Aging Yard Sales. I mean, they had close to 80 locations over the weekend, which is one of their major fundraisers, and there was a lot of chatter within the community, a lot of activity within the community, and a lot of local organizations utilize that as an opportunity to raise funds for, whether it be for the, the schools or, or other specific projects. So it's a, it's a great undertaking for the, for the council, and they had great success, which is great.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Ford?
Yeah, just to repeat what we all said, what a great event that was earlier today, and everybody involved, should be commended. I, I mean, this room was overflowing, couldn't get a parking spot, and I was here, you know, 20 minutes early, so again, just thank you, and, and a great job to everybody involved. And again, you know, that just goes to show what, you know, what we fight for in this country, and get out tomorrow and vote, because that's a right that we have that a lot of people don't have, so just make sure you get out there and vote for whoever you have voted.
I wish to thank the public who came out tonight.[1697.94]